Good afternoon. We will call this regular board meeting for Wednesday, October 2nd, 2024 to order at 4:00 PM. Roll call, please, Ms. Olson.
Director Bankus, here. Director Carey.
Here.
Director Haley.
Here.
Director Jorgensen.
Here.
Director Malpacken.
Here.
Director Nelson.
Here.
Director Ott.
Here.
We have all seven board members in attendance in person for this meeting. Please join me as we observe a moment of silence. Thank you. Director Bankus, can you please make the motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
No. I move that the Board of Education adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Director Bankus.
Aye.
Director Carey.
Aye.
Director Haley.
Aye.
Director Jorgensen.
Aye.
Director Malpacken.
Aye.
Director Nelson.
Aye.
Director Ott.
Aye.
The ayes have it, the agenda has been adopted as presented. We do have executive session today for roughly ninety minutes. Director Carey, can you please make the motion to move into executive session?
I move that the Board of Education convenes into executive session to discuss negotiations per CRS 24-6-402-4E, Particular Matter Employee Compensation.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Director Bankus.
Aye.
Director Carey.
Aye.
Director Haley.
Aye.
Director Jorgensen.
Aye.
Director Malpacken.
Aye.
Director Nelson.
Aye.
Director Ott.
Aye.
The ayes have it, we will move into executive session now and reconvene for the rest of our regular board meeting. Okay. Let's get started. Good evening to all of you. We are reconvening in public session and there is no need to modify the agenda after executive session. I apologize that the executive session ran a few minutes late, but you had a student entertaining the audience out here with her wonderful performance. For those of you who did not see the start of the meeting, the agenda was adopted as presented. Thank you all for being here this evening and hope all of you are having a productive school year as we flip the calendar and move into the fall season. I do want to recognize our student performer this evening, River Newbauer, who was playing the violin and entertaining the audience. And with her is the Palmer Orchestra teacher. So from what I understand, River is the current concert master of Palmer's Chamber Orchestra. In addition, she is currently in the Ovation Ensemble in the Colorado Springs Youth Symphony. River. So do you want to add anything about the Palmer Orchestra program? I think you can come up to the microphone out there. You can share something about the... Yeah, you can, or share something about the upcoming events at Palmer.
Absolutely. So my name's Jenna Noble and I am the Orchestra Director at Palmer High School. We have a lot of amazing students like River. And our first orchestra concert of the year will be on November 6th at 6:00 PM. If you'd like to come, that would be awesome. We would love the support. And then as far as events after that, we'll be competing in some contests and there's there's students who will be participating in some of the honor orchestras in the area. And then we'll have a concert at the end of the year in May as well. I'll make sure to update our Instagram pages and our things like that. If you want to follow us on Instagram, we are WJP Orchestra. So we have that on Instagram. And then we have our Facebook page as well, the William J. Palmer Orchestra Orchestras. So you can follow us on there and all of that. And yeah, one more round of applause for River. She was so awesome. Thank you for having us and have a great meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Noble. When events happen at Palmer, please do send us an invite. You can find our information on the board website, send us an email inviting us and letting us know about the events. That way we can attend and participate. River, is there anything you want to add about... You can come up there. Yeah.
I've really enjoyed my time at Palmer and the orchestra. I was there last year and I'm there this year. Ms. Noble is really great. She's an awesome teacher. She's really improved us so far. And I really think that it's just such an awesome opportunity to be able to play for you all and to have Ms. Noble as my teacher at Palmer.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to Pledge of Allegiance, could I please have John Michael, who's an eighth grade student at Saban Middle School, and Addie Slate, who's a 10th grade Coronado High School student, or... Yeah, to lead us in the pledge. Is Addie here too? Okay. Come and join us, Addie.
We're on your queue.
Yeah, right up here. You can walk up to the front. Go ahead.
Let the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you to the both of you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, it's awards and recognition. Superintendent Call, I'm going to turn it over to you.
This is always the best part in our meeting, to be able to celebrate the incredible work of our students. We also have a parent volunteer recognition today as well. So Melissa, if you want to get us started.
National Education Equity Lab Honor Society honorees. The National Education Equity Lab empowers colleges to take a more active role in developing and inspiring the next generation of leaders at scale at no cost to students. In partnership with many pioneering universities, they deliver and support online college credit-bearing courses into teacher-led high school classrooms across the country. By enabling high school students from historically underserved communities to take actual college courses from college professors, students can build the skills and confidence needed to apply to and thrive in college. Participating students earn widely transferable college credits and have access to mentorships and hands-on support. Through this program, Doherty High School and Odyssey Echo students have been recognized. Under the leadership of Zachary Cooper, six students have received honors from the University of Pennsylvania Grit Lab, the Psychology of Passion and Perseverance, with one receiving the highest honor, and two students received awards from Howard University Principals of Criminal Justice Stanford. Their accomplishments reinforce the exceptional education environment and unwavering pursuit of excellence that expand opportunities to K through fourteen in the Colorado Springs School District 11.
Round of applause. Do you want me to let the staff talk and one of the students talk? But our staff, what was your name again?
Zach Cooper.
Zach said he would defer to the students. So why don't we pick two students who want to tell us a little bit about your program? And what do you love about it and what it's done for you in your educational experience?
So like just like my experience, everything? Yeah. Hello, guys. My name is Jorge. I am a sophomore and... Well, this is like a really like nice experience. I never thought I'd be here anyways. So my experiences here with this course have been wonderful. It's such a like a unique experience and I'm grateful for it. I think my school, my school district and my principal, Ms. Miller, for giving me the chance to take this course. It really has brought me a bunch of blessings. I'm really like grateful for like everything that they've done. So like a few things that this course has taught me are many fundamental values of life. And one of these values is grit. So what is grit exactly? Well, it's not the stuff that you may or may not see in your bathroom floors and walls. It's more of a mindset than anything else. It's about being mentally tough. So what's the difference if I do or don't have one? What makes us eligible to have a grit mindset? Well, for starters, your mindset plays a huge role on how you decide to live your life. As I've recently learned, and you can either think of yourself as perfect and in no need of change, or you can seek ways in which you can help improve yourself and others. The choice is yours, really. Now, someone with great mindset regularly has great passion and perseverance. They have great goals in mind and stick with them. Without passion, we simply burn out. Without perseverance, we may simply give up. It's all about staying mentally tough and moving forward. Thank you.
My name is Carol Lee Egan. I'm a sophomore from Odyssey Echo. When I joined Grit Lab, I honestly thought it was a throwaway. I knew it was a psych class, but in my mind, when I thought psych, I thought, well, I want to learn about the heavy stuff. But this class was mainly about positive psychology. And I thought, well, positive psychology. I consider myself an optimist, even if I'm lying sometimes. I decided, what more do I need to know about that? And I remember I went in that class, I sat down, and I remember my teacher came up to me and he said, look, I know this looks like easy work, but don't forget that it may be important work nonetheless. And he was right about that. What I didn't know about grit was how much it would change me. Like he said, I mean, in my words, grit's a little different. It was more through the experience, the science of perseverance and how it can like, how it can forward your success. When, before I took grit, I thought I didn't need planning. I didn't need this or that. I was headstrong, I was stubborn. And after that, I realized through perseverance, I could really make my life easier. I started making planners. I thought about all the things I might not have liked about myself. And I realized through perseverance, you can always get there. And what I see now through that class, what it's really shown me, isn't more about the perseverance and success of myself, but of my peers. What I saw when I was in there was, at first I was alone. I thought I might really be the best. I thought, you know, it's good this way if I just think that. But I realized it's better being in company of some of the great than believing you're just by yourself, being alone. And what I see here is a bright future, especially going over here. Because I mean, if we are the future, I want you to know that you got, you got some good people who may be in your seats. And I'm talking good strength, perseverance. And so, yeah, what I really learned was that. Thank you.
Another round. Stacy, you want to come up and get in a picture real quick with them? Let's get one more picture with Principal Miller. No, just a picture. Just the picture. Just someone.
Thanks so much.
Colorado Association for Gifted and Talented Education.
Stand up, please, come forward, Gloria. Thank you.
The Colorado Association for Gifted and Talented Education is a statewide advocacy group focused on improving the lives and opportunities of gifted students. This organization brings together the gifted community, affording opportunities where educators, families, and community advocates partner for support, instruction, and information regarding the education of gifted children. This partnership motivates the implementation of school and district goals that provide appropriate educational opportunities for gifted students. Tonight, we honor and recognize Marion Clausen, a dedicated Colorado Springs School District 11 volunteer and our District Accountability Chairperson, as she has been selected to receive the 2024 Parent of the Year Award from the Colorado Association for Gifted and Talented in recognition of her dedication and efforts in the name of gifted students and their families. Marion will be honored and awarded at the upcoming Colorado Association for Gifted and Talented State Conference on Monday, October 21st. Congratulations, Marion, and thank you for all of your work on behalf of our district and students. You are greatly appreciated.
So you all don't know, she doesn't get to take the certificate yet, so we're gonna have to talk about a little bit. You all don't know how much Marion does and how much she represents for the district. So this is a single award for a parent, just in gifted and talented, but Marion's work behind the scenes and our DAC and all the other committees. I want everyone to see us standing together to know that we are partners in the work, knowing that this is what it takes for our students to succeed. And I'm gonna put Marion on the spot. She doesn't know, I'm gonna ask her this. What's your favorite thing about the Gifted and Talented program here in District 11?
First of all, that we have such an amazing program because... And this came from community members that joined this district and say like, this is a need that we need to fill many, many years ago. And they created this and one of those people is Lyman Kaiser, who started this and has been advocating it for so many, many, many years. And it draws us in because the gifted needs are so big. And the teachers are incredible because it's really hard to teach this variety of kids that have so many needs. And I want to thank a couple of them. So I want to thank Jessica Gilliam, because she was our third grade teacher. And with her, we experienced how it works when you have collaboration, how amazing it can be and how it can change not just the kid's life, but as our family. And I want to thank my Saban team and Becky Marsh for leading the team. So they have been incredible of working with my kids. So, and then I want to encourage all parents that are advocating for their kids, keep going. It's hard to go into a room and talk to a whole team. It's really difficult. It's intimidating as a parent. But when it works, it's magic for your kids. And so take your voice, bring it to your school SAC, bring it to the DAC, and just make your school and your community better. Thank you.
Okay. Congratulations to all the students and also Ms. Clausen. So Ms. Clausen, when you go to that October 21st celebration event, do share some of that feedback that you receive out there, pictures from there with the board. Congratulations again. Thanks for all that you do. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, Spotlight. This is about the district math strategy. Superintendent Call.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask the math team to come forward. And just a little bit of introduction. You know, we have so evolved a lot of the things we do in our, in our board meetings. This program Spotlight used to be a school spotlight, and we were making our way through one school at a time and allowing schools to talk about what makes them unique and what makes them different. And then we realized that although we love our fifty-plus schools and what they're able to do, we realized that there were systemic things happening in all schools that should be celebrated in its entirety. I appreciate Marion's comments on our Gifted and Talented program, who has been highlighted before. And so today, we want to bring mathematics. This is, this is really, this one's personal for me because it was math that was my, my forte when I was, when I was younger, that made me fall back in love with school. And so it was my, I wanted to get to school, I wanted to get to math, I wanted to get the chance to problem solve using the skills that I had. And for some kids, come to school because they want to be in visual performing arts, other kids come for athletics. I came for the quality of the math teachers that I have. And so then, albeit long but gone, Mr. Cahill, my AP Calculus teacher, who taught me TOA SOCA, actually when I had him in Algebra II before I had him in Calculus, which is not how anybody else talks about trigonometry. There's a different acronym for it, but that was the way he taught it. And me and my friends from high school still talk about that and talk about Mr. Cahill. So Lauren, if you have the floor to talk about our great math program.
Awesome, thank you. Good evening, Board, Superintendent Call, and guests. My name's Dr., my name is Dr. Lauren Murphy, and I'm the Director of Math and Science. I have some phenomenal people here with me that'll, that'll introduce themselves throughout this Spotlight, that share in the great work that we're doing in District 11 mathematics. We're really excited tonight to be able to spotlight the incredible work that's happening in District 11 mathematics, focused specifically on achievement and growth. As you can see on this slide, District 11 is one of only three districts to increase proficiency in both of the last two years. And we have the largest percent change amongst the districts from 2022 to 2024. Our sustained growth in mathematics in elementary schools actually helped the district achieve the MEATs rating on the district performance framework. So it's really exciting to see our, our work district-wide. This evening, we get the opportunity to highlight the achievement of two students who accelerated in mathematics and are achieving at extraordinary levels. And we also get to showcase the amazing math growth and achievement of two of our elementary schools, which improved their overall school performance framework ratings. And through the Spotlight, we're gonna illustrate our dedication to investing in our schools and teachers that lead to high-quality instruction, which results in student success. So I look forward to sharing the Spotlight with all these guys. So first, it's my pleasure to introduce John Michael. You met him earlier at the pledge. He's an eighth grader at Saban and he's attending two classes at Doherty, including honors geometry. So go ahead, John Michael.
My name is John Michael Johnson-Terez, and I'm a D11 student in the eighth grade. I currently go to both Saban Middle School and Doherty High School. I'm called here today to be recognized by the board and to share my math educational journey and future goals. Once again, thanks for this opportunity to speak. I began my academic journey by going to James Madison Elementary as a kindergartner. I was introduced to the foundations of math and exactly how important it was to society throughout my elementary years. It taught me that without these concepts, we won't be this advanced in technology and science. This made me interested in the subject because you can really apply to anything you think of. Also, I had and still have a dream of becoming an engineer, which requires the most of math. After finishing elementary school, I started attending Saban Middle School. In my sixth grade year, my love for math kept growing with the further teaching of simple algebraic and geometric concepts. In the early second semester of that year, my math teacher gave me an opportunity to take a pre-algebra class for the rest of the year. This allowed me to skip a grade in the subject. Just like that, I was taking Algebra I in eighth or ninth grade class in the seventh grade. Some aspects of the class were hard at first, but I thought it was a nice challenge and change of pace that contributed towards my goals. As an eighth grader today, I'm currently taking an honors geometry class at Doherty High School. As mentioned, I have a goal of becoming an engineer in the future. Engineering requires models, structures, and processes that have all sorts of math concepts incorporated into them. From this career path goal, I will continue taking the recommended math and science courses, contributing towards this knowledge of engineering. A memorable math lesson was probability and statistics. This was impactful for me because it is the building blocks to machine learning, which is the foundation for artificial intelligence. Our culture is becoming more reliant on AI. And I feel, and I feel that by attributing by, I'm sorry. And I feel that by attributing my knowledge of probability and distribution, that I too will be able to positively impact this field of study. I'm grateful for, I am grateful for each math concept and I, and I can't wait to learn how these apply to engineering. Thank you.
All right, good evening. My name is Zachary Trundleman. I'm the high school math facilitator. I'm here to introduce Addie Slate, 10th grader at Coronado, taking calculus at UCCS.
Hello, my name is Addie Slate. I have been advanced in math for a very long time. Especially started in seventh grade when I took Algebra III, IV at Palmer. And then I skipped eighth grade. In ninth grade, I took pre-calculus AP and currently I'm taking Calc I at UCCS. And the support of the district has helped me a lot with that, especially since I'm planning on going into STEM, specifically physics, which is heavily reliant on math. So the acceleration math is definitely giving me a head start on that and is helping get me a challenge in math. Thank you.
Hi, guys. I'm here to introduce what I would consider to be a wonderful, amazing opportunity and the sole pleasure to introduce a distinguished teacher and educator from Twain Elementary. Through our partnership through D11 last year, they made some outstanding growth, some of the most you're gonna, you're gonna see from a school from last year. And with no further ado, I want to introduce Sheri Perdue.
Good evening, Board. I'm Sheri Perdue, a fourth grade teacher over at Twain Elementary School. Our admin noticed that there was a need for teachers to understand the standards and what the standards were asking the students to be able to do and understand. With that need, she brought in our wonderful math coaches, Phil Hutcheson and Liz Jordan, to be able to break down those standards, break down the skills, and help us understand the different aspects of rigor that those standards were asking our students to be able to do. They noticed that our primary teachers were needing more of a push towards the students' understanding the procedural processes of math. And then our intermediate, intermediate teachers were needing more of, more assistance in breaking down those conceptual models for the students to be able to understand the math processes that they could kind of just already know three times four equals twelve, but they needed to understand why it equaled that and be able to explain it. Through this process of breaking down the standards and the rigor, we were able to achieve some amazing growth with our students. Additionally, our admin noticed that we needed a PLC process that we could talk about math for six weeks at a time to be able to get some continuity with the teachers being able to see the growth of the students or see where the holes for the students were. And our coaches encouraged us to do the math through the lens of the students, through the models that the students were being asked to do on both assessments and exit tickets. Not just get the right answer, but how did you get the right answer? And that was a huge push for our teachers and for our students last year. Through both of these processes, our coaches were able to be in on PLCs and help us to have those conversations in the moment to better help our students grow. We were able to get immediate feedback during those PLCs and we were able to get co-teaching opportunities as teachers to help us with our process. These, these instructional processes helped move Twain to growth, to growth that we hadn't achieved in previous years. Thank you to the teachers that put in the time, the energy, the effort, and the dedication for their students, as well as to our wonderful coaches who helped us achieve that amazing growth.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Jordan, one of the math specialists. And I have the extreme pleasure to introduce Aaron Ford, a great friend of mine, who we spent a lot of time together over at Audubon, doing some great work over there. And so I'm gonna turn it over to him.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to be on this side of it this year and, you know, been here for three straight years now. And we get to tell you what we've done instead of what we need to do to get here. So our math journey the last couple of years has been a pretty extensive one. I'm here representing some great teachers that are back here. They did the work. But through, through the hard work of our teachers, our students engaging, Liz Jordan, she was in our building at least every other week last year, a lot of times every Thursday. We dedicated our PLC time to math. We said, I mean, you can see on our improvement plan, you know, we had a twenty-five growth and twenty-five percent of our kids achieving at or above grade level. And so we said, what's our plan gonna be? What are we gonna do? And first phone call we made was get math support in. What does that look like? Teachers started doing the math in PLCs. We engaged students in a different way through some student agency that we started in last year that we're continuing this year. And we really just upped the ante on what we're doing. The highlights for me were when we get to like mid-year benchmarking and my teachers are running out of their classroom doors after they take STAR, like the kids are hitting submit and they're out already saying, we have a ninety SGP. And that's where our third grade team, they sat all year long. So when we have the teachers that invested in it, the kids got invested in it, the support from Liz and the math team being... from Liz and the math team being there, and it's continued this year. So just because we did it for one year doesn't mean that that's where we stopped. And so instead of saying, how do we build the foundations up now, we're looking at year-long planning with our standards. Where does it map towards C-MS? Where does kindergarten math start affecting fifth grade math? And our teachers are engaging in those conversations so that we're having this longitudinal and vertical alignment across the building. So, thank you.
My name is Katie Duncan, one of the math specialists for the district. I just want to thank you all for your attention tonight, and we look forward to future opportunities to showcase math.
Before we get to the Q and A from the board, just a couple of anecdotes. Addie, it's great to see you again. I met Addie really the first month I was here. You and your dad came and met with me and the academics team, and I forget your dad's name.
Josh.
Josh. Josh was asking, how are we going to ensure that we have the right resources available for Addie to continue at the great accelerated way that she's just eating up math, and you can just see the way that she talks about it? And I said, well, and to Marian's point, we have a great gifted, talented program. How do we continue that as we get beyond GMP in middle school and GT Resources in middle school and elementary school? We have GMP in elementary school, too. How do we satiate the need at the high school level? And so you heard taking classes, taking high school level classes while in middle school, you heard the same thing from John, taking algebra or calculus now at UCCS while at Coronado. Also, the anecdote is that Addie happened to be in the classroom last year when we delivered an $11,000 Impact Teacher Award to Kyle, your teacher at Coronado. And so of no surprise, Addie seems to follow excellence and be in those spaces. I'm sure the same is true for John. I don't know John well personally. To Phil, who came forward here, there's a great magic trick in the district, which is you will see Phil in one school in a classroom, and if you can move at the speed of light to another school in another classroom, magically, Phil is also there. And I don't know how it happens, because I think that I move pretty quick, but Phil moves faster, and I'm certain that that is reflective of the rest of the team as well. But Phil has really been the person who has codified this model of our goal is everybody that is at central office is school-based, and Phil gets more miles on those shoes than anybody that I've seen in my decade-plus in public education. I love the comment that said, thank you so much, our teacher, what was your first name again?
Sheri.
Sheri. For Sheri's comment of, we were asked to do the math. We were asked to do the math. Anybody ever go through that game show, Are You Smarter Than a Fifth Grader? It's really hard to win in that game show, right? The standards are not as easy as people want to say that they are. Doing the math, loving the math, is the secret to being able to teach the math. Math is not something you can fake your way through. So thank you for commenting on the professional development that says, everybody wants to be able to do the math. And to Felicia and Aaron, both here together, the work that your schools have done, the work that your schools, Aaron, you said it, it's great to be here to show what we did, not what we need to do. In just two short years, Aaron was two years ago, Felicia was last year, these are two schools that are here that are highlighted, not because we wanted to highlight schools that weren't doing well and are doing better. They have the best growth in the district for what they're doing in math. We have the script, we're using it, it's working well. We appreciate your leadership, we know it's not easy. And then Lauren, just to the work that you're doing, particularly now at this new-designed academic space, on how it is that we're bringing what we have at central office closer to schools. I open the floor for questions from the board.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and sharing something about each, what each one of you bring to our school district, comments or questions.
Director Nelson.
Just thank you for coming and presenting to us. This was fantastic to hear what is working and just the work that's happening to help us get a sense of all that you are doing. So thank you for taking the time to come present to us, and thank you for the hard work that you're putting in. And it is so exciting to, like, we are celebrating with you both that you are seeing that improvement and just please let us know how we can continue to support your schools.
Thank you.
Director Ott.
Thank you. I want to second that. It's incredibly impressive, the difference that is happening at the schools, and congratulations to both of you and all of your teams. My question is, to the point of what else do you need, will we be able to continue to support these schools? Will you continue to have the support you have now that brought you to this point? And that might be a question for you, Mr. Gall.
I'd love to hear, you know, from the principals. They both have different relationships with some of our external service providers, one instructional empowerment, and the others in our UVA cohort. So I'd love both of you to opine on how do we sustain the supports and the professional growth that your team is seeing.
Well, hopefully, we're not so good at this. We only need these amazing coaches once in a while, but I would say that for the purposes of moving forward, we want to continue to build on the strengths that our teachers have. So continuing to provide that professional development, matter of fact, Liz was in our building today working with one of our teachers who's here. So as long as those coaches are still available to us, we will absolutely have them in. So please continue to fund that so that we can make sure that they can come and support us whenever we need them. Because there are concepts sometimes that are harder than others to teach, but I also am being taught at the same time, and they're watching that co-teaching model, that modeling going on. So if we can sustain these folks, they're going to sustain our buildings, and it's just going to continue to get better.
Ditto. No, I would 100% agree with what Felicia said. We've already been able to continue some of that work this year through our partner with instructional empowerment, through our partnership. Shawna Brown, who's the new math tosta this year, she's already been in our building, I don't know how many times. She was co-planning with one of our fifth grade teachers who's a singleton this year. We were, you know, we're down to one fifth grade classroom, and that's hard to do on your own. And so Shawna's already been coming in, planning with her, co-teaching with her, doing some of that work so that we're able to sustain this moving forward. Like Felicia said, we want to get to a place where we don't necessarily need coaches every other week or every once a month, but we're slowly getting there, and we're getting that foundation rebuilt. But it's been great, and it has continued this year with those supports, and we just hope it will continue.
And we have a professional development plan coming. Ms. Ottmer, what month was that, in November or December?
November.
November. And so we'll hit on some of the touchpoints of convergence. And so the goal here is for us to be self-sustaining. We are using external partners to drive some of the change. It's very difficult to change yourself, but you stand very closely right now, Director Ott, to all full-time employees of the district who are all either homegrown in the district or came to the district to be a part of this mission. And so yes, we will continue for the next year or two to use the outside coaching and supports that we have. But Aaron is now completing his second year with instructional empowerment, and I can tell you, if you go back to the slide, you'll see that, there we go, you can see some of the tools in the bottom right there. That's one of our placemats that the kids use for student agency. That's old hat for Aaron now. That's newly introduced to other teachers in the district this year. So we're using the things that have worked in the district to double down and move them forward. And so it will take another year or two to get to the next set of schools so we can get to what we call that late majority that then adopts this idea that every student deserves the access to this high-quality instruction that you've seen displayed here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just leave that up there for a minute. Any other comments? Okay, Director Hifley.
Just, I have to say, as a former teacher who did not, in all transparency, did not get along with math, when I was in school myself, just the kids that were up here talking today, you've got a middle school student taking upper-level courses in a high school. You've got a high school student taking courses in college. I am beyond floored about that. And I know you guys are going to talk about the numbers, and you're going to talk about, you know, graphs and pie charts and all sorts of math. But when you bring kids up here, and the kids are the ones saying, this is what this means to me, this is how I'm succeeding, and this is how my relationship with math is going, just, I mean, it's not often that I don't have the words, but I don't, all I can do is two thumbs up, you guys, just way to go. Just way to go. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other comments at this time? I'm not going to talk about numbers, I'm going to talk about colors. If you look at the far-right column up there, you had a lot of reds and oranges out there, and now this year you have green and oranges or yellows, whatever it is. And I know both of you have been here in past years, and we've had some challenging conversations of how to move your schools into the next level and away from the state watch list. And here you are, testament to your commitment and the staff that are behind you, who are also out here, kudos to what you guys are doing. Later on in the board agenda, we are going to be talking about the school improvement plans for three of our schools that are still in priority improvement or turnaround status. But you showed the way how in a year you can move from where you were last year to where you are now. So, and that means that other schools can also follow in your footsteps. And thank you for all of you for leaning in and supporting these students. That's amazing, seeing all those students thriving. Each student has their own skill, and some of them are VAPA students, but these students are gifted mathematically, and you are supporting them and helping them thrive and succeed and prepare them for the next level. So thank you for all of you for being here.
Awesome.
Yep, thank you. So moving on to the next item on the agenda, it's the superintendent's report. Superintendent Gall.
If I could get John and Addie to come up to do our teacher thank yous. I believe, John, you're first. Addie, you can come up here, too.
Superintendent for three and a half minutes. Do whatever you want. You can't stop. It wasn't just me that got myself to this point. There were numerous teachers that helped me and created a positive influence on me. I would like to shout out Mr. Mulligan, my first grade teacher, and my STEM teacher for the majority of elementary school. Elementary teachers are the ones that set the foundations of what students are going to learn for the next years of your life. More importantly, they create students' moods and thoughts on certain subjects in school. With great teachers, students are more invested in school. Mr. Mulligan's love and compassion for math and science molded my early education interests. And I would like to take this time to say thank you to Mr. Mulligan and all the elementary school teachers who leave a lasting impression on young students' desire to learn.
Can you remind everybody where Mr. Mulligan taught you at school?
Oh, he teaches at James Madison Elementary.
And to add to what John Michael said, the picture that you see of Mr. Mulligan is from last year's Crystal Apple Award event, and Mr. Mulligan was one of the Crystal Apple Award recipients last year.
Thanks.
I would like to give a shout out to my, to Mr. Joyner. He taught me Algebra III, IV at Palmer when I was in seventh grade and really helped develop my love for math, because like, he would help give me extra challenging work if I needed it and work at my level, as well as I could come in with interesting questions about math, and he would answer them for me and talk about it and just really helped grow my love for math. So big thank you to Mr. Joyner.
So I'll point out the equations in the background, since Parth pointed out the slides in the background before. If you ever come into my office, you'll see solve for x all the time. That seems to be the goal that we're always shooting for. As I go on to next slides, we're going to be pretty brief tonight because we want to get through our agenda, but I want to highlight a couple of things that you heard us talking about. The idea in our superintendent's report is to show you the meat on the bone of the things that we're talking about, that they're really there and they're happening, and they're impacting our students in the most positive way. I want to thank Edison Elementary School for using High Trails up in Florissant, Colorado. They went up there a couple of days in the fall. And what I really loved about their experience there, it's kind of hard, the pictures don't really show it, but they took the student agency and the student teaming concept, and they applied it in a field trip setting. So it wasn't a field trip is just a day out of the classroom. It was how do we take the learning and the structures that we have in the classroom, and how do we apply it outside the classroom for kids to get real-world learning on what can sometimes feel like static concepts in the classroom? And I think you can see that it was a beautiful day out there, and so hats off to the Edison Chargers and their time at High Trails. We appreciate the partnership with High Trails. Secondly, I want to touch a little bit on our attendance campaign. Thanks again to, first of all, our attendance office and specifically to our engagement office for pushing messaging out directly to parents. Every day missed is a learning opportunity that's gone and you can't capture again. We have a chronic absentee issue, not just in the district, we have a chronic absentee problem in the city and in the state, probably across our country. That chronically absent means that a child misses 10% or more of the school year. Last year, we reported 40% of our students as chronically absent. That means 9,000 children missed at least 18 days. I remember going to school when we were giving out certificates for zero missed days. So I'm not talking to staff, I'm talking to parents. Please bring your children to school. If you have an obstacle, let us know what that obstacle is. We have resources to help you. Do not let your child say that they can just make up the work. A lost face-to-face opportunity with the incredible instruction that we have in District 11 is very difficult to recapture. Please bring your kids to school. We would love to have to give out more certificates for zero-day missed. We will be bringing some bucketed categories to the Board of Education after Christmas to see what we learned in first semester and then have strategies to make sure that we are reducing that chronic absenteeism by significant rates. One of the things we heard from our students, particularly in middle school, is they didn't feel safe at school. They particularly didn't feel safe in the bathrooms. So I want to thank our capital team. I think Dr. Comfort is here somewhere. I think we did $8 million of upgrades, is that right? $8 million were the upgrades into bathrooms. So you've got to get into our middle schools, take a look at our bathrooms. This was at Swigert Middle School just this week, where the kids did a ribbon cutting. And the boy on the left already has a favorite bathroom. He has a favorite bathroom because the stalls are actually colored different. And I'm going to say it, and I know it's all recorded, how does it take America 150 years to get to a place where boys and girls can go to bathroom in private? Just because you're a boy doesn't mean you should have to stand there and publicly display yourself to be able to go to the bathroom. Our middle schools are investing in a space where our children can go to bathroom in private. It's about time. Every kid deserves that, right? Thank you to the capital team. Thank you particularly to Non-Construction for their partnership and their adaptability and making sure that these designs met our needs. I also want to talk about another issue in attendance. We sent a letter out on school safety to all our parents and community yesterday. There have been a rash of social media threats that have gone out, not just in District 11. It was actually reported in the Gazette Telegraph last week that D-20 was actually, was able to locate a student that had shared false threats about schools and pressed charges. Ellicott School District canceled the school day the week before that because of these threats. I am telling you right now, if you are a student or if you are a parent that is listening, we will find you. The FBI, CSPD, the sheriff's office, the district attorney, this is against the law. It is a Class 6 felony, which is punishable by a minimum of a year in jail, up to 18 months, $1,000 to a $10,000 fine. This threat lands on count day. $11,000 per student. It doesn't take long until we are losing a million dollars because parents are afraid that their children are not safe in school. We investigate every threat with our, David Allison and his team, David's out there right now, you can see any waves. He immediately gets seized by either Safe to Tell or other ways that they come in. He calls CSPD, they move as quickly as they can, they normally do a morale check and go over to the family if we know where it came from. And when we don't, we have protocols where we have heightened levels of security to ensure that our schools can open safely. If you'll notice, this list is not just District 11 schools. It is criminal to say bomb in the airport. It is also criminal to say, I'm going to shoot up a school. It is critical that our parents know that they are safe. No one recovers from that experience. Let's not be the district where it happens. Let's be the district where we self-check each other. If you have information, please reach out to David Allison in our security office. Reach out to the local authorities. Call your principal, tell your teacher, we want our schools open for learning. And when there are real threats that we know and they are credible, we will do everything we can to keep your children safe, to include closing schools. But we will not be held hostage by social media because kids don't want to go to school on October 1st. Okay. Moving on, I want to give a couple of staffing updates. We are now a month and a half into the new school year, and we're still not quite close enough to students. So, we have split our academics team in half. And if I could get, I think, has Liz departed already as well? She just stepped, just stepped out for a second. But Liz Tenkate is our interim chief of teaching and learning, who's going to enter right now. Hi, Liz. And Dr. Carol Frye is our interim chief of coaching and development. We felt that we wanted to get more of the expert resources that you just saw displayed in math even closer to schools. And so, what we're doing is we're increasing the number of people that are going to report to the superintendent so I can be ultimately accountable for everything that happens in our schools. And that means everything that your child has taught, that means every book that we purchase, that means every lesson that we teach. We teach and parents parent. That's your commitment from this superintendent. I will move heaven and earth to support the needs of any individual child as soon as that child makes their needs known. But we will not infuse what an adult might believe a child needs until we know that that's what's needed. We teach and parents parent. So, you'll see also a change in the reporting structure to the superintendent, if you notice the highlight on the right. Now, all of the academic team is broken into four individual leaders. I've already introduced Carol and Liz. Valerie Skates is leading our future-ready work. You've seen that in the future centers. That's how it is that we're not using the diploma as the goal, we're using it as a starting point. And we've had the great honor of having Lana Flanican to stay in her transition year after her wonderful leadership at Doherty High School as a principal on special assignment for us to redefine how it is that we ensure our students are getting a peak experience every year in high school. How do we turn CTE into a pathway in the middle class for every one of our students? So, you'll can see here now, I have full authority to know everything that happens in the classroom. If you're listening in the public and you have a concern about a challenge in the classroom, please bring it to me. We will be reviewing all Tier Two and Tier Three supports to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the average parent and continuing to deliver the high-quality instruction that we're doing. And that's all I have for today's superintendent's report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for sharing that information. And I want to take a minute and foot stomp what Superintendent Gall talked about out there. Student and staff safety is our highest priority. You heard the superintendent, anything that threatens that safety in our schools will be investigated to the fullest possible extent, even if it is meant as a joke or a prank. The security and the safety of our students and staff is not a joke, it's not a prank. So, parents are, I'm reaching out to you, the board is reaching out to you, the superintendent is reaching out to you. We need your help and partnership in addressing this matter. Please take, talk to your students about the seriousness of such situations and the time, resources it takes to investigate these matters, even if it is meant as a joke. And thank you Superintendent Gall for also sharing that restructure in curriculum and instruction and academics with the community and the revised organizational structure. The board received some concerns regarding certain supplementary curriculum material that was distributed earlier this year. Some of the content in those distributed material did not align with the board priorities and values. That was addressed by Superintendent Gall in his response. Right now, he is putting guardrails in place to ensure that there is clear oversight going forth. As we discussed later, as we will discuss later this evening, we'll be talking about the board's priorities. The board's overarching priority is to improve academic outcomes for all students and strategies that will help and accomplish that goal. Anything that does not directly tie to that objective is not productive use of the limited district resources. Thank you. Any further comment by the board on superintendent's report? Okay, moving on to the next, okay. Go ahead.
I just had a question about the materials you mentioned and wondering if there's communication that will be going out to staff to help them understand that previously you were given this as a resource and now please disregard, it is not something we recommend.
You're having your Peter Brady moment like I normally do. We are working with the staff right now on that plan. We have two deadlines, one in the, this week in October, and then one three weeks later that I will have reviewed. And I will then come to the board to say what are the things that we think don't belong in classrooms, and we'll have the next steps on how to return those if needed.
Okay, so, and then communicating to this, I guess I'm thinking more of the school-based staff, that, if, that's what you're talking about? You, you will come up with a communication plan?
Yeah, I got to do a hard review of everything we've bought in the last year and a half.
Oh, okay, not just the ones that we were?
I got to do a hard review of everything we've bought in the last year and a half to understand, because otherwise I'm going to play whack-a-mole and I'm going to lose. So, we right now are working as a senior staff to do that type of review to understand. It's very difficult in this space to find the perfect material. We were so exhausted by it when I was in Washington DC that we just started developing our own curriculum. Right? Finding that person who meets the exact value set of a board or a community or the exact need of a school is impossible. So, some of the steps that we're talking about is maybe we do procure things, but we modify and we give very clear direction. We bought this for chapters six and seven. That's what we're using, you use chapter six and seven, then we go forward. We're working on that together as a staff to understand what's the way that we can ensure that our kids continue to get access to the highest quality instruction supported by the highest quality materials that don't distract or deter us from the, from the strategies we have right now.
Okay, thank you. I will look forward to hearing that communication that will be going out to just clarify for staff. Thanks.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, public comments. Ms. Olson, we have public comments. And I think I see some students up there, and they've been so patient, but they've also been getting antsy a little bit. So, welcome. Let me call your name first. Going over the board protocol for public comments, just as a reminder, the board welcomes and is very interested in listening to community feedback as it helps us better do our job. Please approach the podium when your name is called. You have three minutes to deliver your remarks. Please monitor the clock that is on display and complete your comments in that allotted time. Board meetings are primarily business meetings for the orderly and efficient conduct of the business of the district. Keeping that in mind, the clear expectation is that your feedback is provided in a civil, professional, and courteous manner without resorting to disparaging or defamatory remarks. Students are often in attendance or watching the broadcast. Speakers' remarks therefore should be suitable for an audience that includes minor, minor students, including no use of profanities or obscenities. The board will not respond to comments, but rest assured, your comments will be taken into consideration as we discuss pertinent agenda item. And to maintain the flow of the meeting and not have prolonged interruption, please refrain from clapping. If you want to show support or solidarity to a speaker, please stand as the speaker is talking or use a silent applause. Thank you so much for being here. The first group of students I have are all from West Elementary and West Middle School. Thank you for being here. And we have the principal, Michael Anderson, also joining them up here. I have Rose Anderson, Rose Anderson, which one? Is that you, Rose? Okay. And then I have Callie Anderson. You are her sibling. And then we have Ophelia Alvera. Hi, Ophelia. And then we have Scarlett Aviar. You are the eighth grade student. You guys collectively have five minutes, take it away.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Scarlett Aviar, and I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Callie Anderson, and I'm in second grade.
I'm Ophelia Aviar, I'm in second grade.
I'm Rose, and I'm in kindergarten.
We are here to invite you to our 100th anniversary at, at West Campus Middle, at West Campus. It's October 11th from 4:00 to 7:00, and we would like you to come.
Come for music, yard games.
Food check, a carnival.
And lots of fun.
Thank you.
Principal Anderson, you have something?
Good evening. I'll just wrap up. These guys do way better job than I do. We have our 100th anniversary next Friday. Everybody's welcome. We're going door-to-door handing out invitations to our neighbors as well. We'd love to have it be a block party and let the neighborhood see what West is all about. So, thank you very much for the time.
Okay, thank you. You guys didn't take five minutes, it was like a minute and a half. But thank you, thank you, and you guys waited patiently. Thank you for your patience. Now, go home and get some dinner. Moving on, moving on to other citizen comments or public comments, Ms. Janine Russell.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Gall. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Janine Russell. I'm the Director of Food and Nutrition Services. I am proud to be able to say that the Food Service Department is very honored to be able to serve great meals to students. We are part of the National School Lunch Program, and as such, this program is being honored October 14th through the 18th for National School Lunch Week. My 230-plus staff members are fully aware of the importance that nutrition plays in student achievement. Currently, we are serving about 6,000 breakfast each day, along with about 14,300 and some lunches each day. Our menus are put together by Jamie Humphrey. She is a registered dietitian, and she's also our Assistant Director for Nutrition. She takes great care in putting these menus together as she has to make sure it incorporates USDA requirements. We have to meet certain standards for calories, fat, sodium, salt, et cetera. It's very challenging. She also takes into account student preferences because no matter how great the menu is, if students won't eat it, it's a waste of time, money, and resources. So, we do take student feedback into account. We have focus groups with specific questions for elementary, middle school, and high school. And currently, in the last couple of weeks, we've been conducting those focus groups to obtain feedback from students, and that information will be inserted into our menus probably for second semester. So, again, thank you for the opportunity. We serve great meals to students with a smile.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. Yeah, I didn't share this at the beginning of the meeting, so thank you for providing us the dinner earlier today. For the rest of the community, Food and Nutrition Services provided the board dinner today. So, we got to experience a cafeteria school lunch, and it was excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next public comment, Jackson Hoskinson. Jackson Hoskinson, thank you.
Hi, good evening, y'all. Thank you for having me today. My name is Jackson Hoskinson. I am the school advocate at Inside Out Youth Services. At Inside Out, our mission is to build access, equity, and power with LGBTQIA2+ youth in the Pikes Peak region. So, we do very similar work. And my job is to help extend those resources and supports in, and safety nets out to the communities and schools at large. Today, I will be commenting on the conversations you all will likely be having about House Bill 1039 and updating your policy ACA through the rest of the semester. HB 1039, also known as the Non-Legal Name Change Bill, was passed earlier this year and states that it is discrimination in Colorado for teachers and other school personnel to not use a student's preferred or correct name during extracurricular activities or while in school. I'd like to start my comments by thanking the legislators that passed this bill as it protects youth, youth's well-being in schools and goes a long way in supporting students as their authentic selves. We know from surveys like the Trevor Project and the Healthy Kids Colorado Survey that youth whose chosen name and pronouns are respected are over half as less likely to, to attempt suicide, so over a 50% reduction, which is huge. Laws that support LGBTQIA2+ youth decrease the risk of suicide for a vulnerable community, and we are grateful that this law is now law in Colorado. Aurora Public Schools has recently updated their ACA guidance on non-legal name changes by giving students an option to inform the school of a chosen name, preferred name, or nickname that does not require an official records change. If the school does not want to make change, if the student does not want to make changes to their official documents, then no parental notification is required. We recommend that this board adopt a policy similar to the one in Aurora to keep the time, the valuable time of teachers and administrators open without forcing them to spend time contacting parents every time one of their students would like to go by any name or nickname not on their birth certificate. We would also like to dispel the myth that this law promotes government interference in private family conversations. In fact, we know that conversations about chosen names and pronouns are best had privately between family members. Requiring parental notification in policy ACA would promote unnecessary interference by the school district in conversations that should be had between a student and their family when the student is ready for that conversation. If a student comes out as transgender to school staff, the best thing to do is respect that student's privacy to build trust and respect them. This keeps students safe while empowering them to come out at their own pace. If privacy is not an option, clear communication with the student in advance should be required in this policy to keep them informed about situations where school staff may need to contact parents or guardians. We want to thank you for keeping all students in mind when you are implementing this policy, which if implemented correctly, will help students thrive in school and succeed academically. At the end of the day, that's what we all want. I'd like to conclude by offering myself and Inside Out as a resource for all of you while you are talking about this policy. We'd be happy to come to a work session or provide policy consultation along the way to make sure it's safe and inclusive. And to any students who are watching, Inside Out is here for you as well after school. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Please refrain from clapping. Ms. Avigaya Bergman. Did I get your name right?
Not really.
Okay, please introduce yourself.
Good evening, board. My name is Avigaya Bergman. I wanted to speak to you tonight to congratulate you and the superintendent on your great start to the school year. On academics, it's great to see that for the second year in a row, you've cut the number of schools on the state watch list in half. The CMAS results show that you have a long way to go, but you have come very far from where you started. This year, your ABC policy seemed to be going very well. I'm especially glad to see your cell phone policy. Almost all of you up here ran on a platform of getting rid of cell phones from the learning environment. And it's not very often that elected officials do the exact thing they campaigned on. Also, your dedication to keep students safe and not putting up with stupid threats on social media, that's amazing. I love that. I wish that was more talked about when I was in school. That would have made me feel safer, too. You've thus far been excellent on parental rights as well. I want to ask that when you go to consider how to approach the terrible House Bill 24-1039, that you have at the very least include parental notification, and if you are able, include parental consent before you change the name of their children. Also, just wanted to thank Superintendent Gall and the board for your continued work in making sure the curriculum and instruction is focused on academic achievement by removing divisive material that doesn't help a single student read, write, or do math. It's probably not surprising that there is still work to be done, given the state of the district only a few years ago. I'm glad to see that progress continues to be made to make the sole focus on student achievement. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, that's the end of public comments. The board appreciates your feedback, and if you checked the box, asking an administrator to contact you, somebody from administration will get back to you. Thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, it is board member reports. Director Bankus, you are up first.
In recognition of National Principals Appreciation Month, I wanted to say how much I've enjoyed visiting schools, although some of those meetings were very early. And thank you to all the teachers who are dedicated to making sure that they're at school, bright-eyed, bushy-tailed, and ready to go when that, when they enter their school doors. I also want to thank I also want to thank the students and the parents who send their children to school to, ready to learn each and every day. As it's been said earlier tonight, that it's important for children to be in school. And I so appreciate teachers who are there each and every day, ready to teach their kids to the best and to the highest standards. It is a great honor to be in this district and in, sitting on this board to make sure that we support all of you in your classrooms doing the work that needs to be done as a contribution to how it is that we all live in our own community and that we reflect our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Hayfley.
Thank you, President Mel Pakem. I want to start out by thanking the principals and staff at the following schools. Audubon Elementary, Mr. Aaron Ford. Grant Elementary, Mr. Ryan Miller. Madison Elementary, Mr. Darian Latimer. Scott Elementary, Mr. Thomas Copley. Twain Elementary, Ms. Felicia Boudreaux. North Middle School, Ms. Stephanie Leisure. Achieve Online, Mr. John Bailey. Bijou, Ms. M.C. Rubin Clapper. And Coronado, Ms. Addie Arnell. Those are all the schools that I have visited, um, in the last couple of weeks, and I was welcomed into each school during their busy days. Uh, staff took the time to share the unique backgrounds and motivations behind what they do. Being in the schools is always a great experience for me, and it's striking to see both the differences and the commonalities across them. Every single person I met is deeply committed to their students, working tirelessly to prioritize both academic success and the well-being of the kids as individuals. It takes truly special people to do what they do daily, and I'm incredibly proud of the role they play in shaping each student's experience, which can be different for every child. I was particularly impressed by the principals who know every student's name as they walk the halls. This is a remarkable feat, given the number of kids they interact with every day. I'd also like to point out how clean and orderly every school I've visited has been since I joined the board, last year as well. Managing that in schools with anywhere from several hundred, what I call littles, elementary kids, to over 1,000 middle and high schoolers is no small achievement. And I want to say well done to everybody involved in that. I'd like to give a special shout out to North Middle School for their amazing 100-year celebration. That was awesome. The school is in top shape as the community toured, showcasing its rich history and present-day excellence. Each room was dedicated to a specific decade, complete with presentations and a time capsule unveiling was a highlight for me. As a former history teacher, I was thrilled to see the well-preserved newspapers, the homework, and by the way, the penmanship on that was incredible, and, and photos from the past. It was a fantastic event. Unfortunately, those homework assignments were written in cursive, which stumps some kids, which is, is too bad. We'll have to look at that. Um, another shout out goes to Coronado High School, which just celebrated another homecoming, including the annual parade in old Colorado City. This parade has always been a highlight for me, and I was honored to walk in it this year alongside Director Ott and Darren Smith, one of my principals during my time there. He's now an area superintendent. We were joined by the Cougar mascots. As you can see, there's one of them. Um, the Cougar mascots are new this year. They, they have abs. They haven't had that before. Um, I was, I was happy to be greeted by former students along the route who have, um, single-handedly made me feel just a little bit older because their kids now go to Coronado. And in, while I was still teaching at Coronado, um, those kids had kids that were now in my class and made me a grand teacher. And that was fun. It was a full circle moment for me. Uh, while on the topic of Coronado, I want to thank Joel Caston, Mr. Tom, and the construction. Students build house, also make sheds. Um, this is my backyard as of this evening. Um, they've built me. That was several years ago. And then they built me a lean-to. That's the one on the right. And then on Monday, they just built the one on the left. Um, so they need painted to match now, so. They don't do that, apparently. They just build them. So now, so now I get to paint. They, they, this is part of their student enterprise project. This is the Coronado Construction Technology Class. And I had, I don't know how many kids in my backyard, but there were a lot of them. And, um, it's been wonderful to see these talented students in action. And I just want to make it clear that I, I did pay for these. For each one of them, uh, the shed and, and both the lean-tos and, and, boy, I'll tell you what. They, um, they do their job and they do it well. And, uh, the kids, their craftsmanship is, is just excellent. They build these things at the school prefab, and then they drop them off at my house. And then they come back a couple of days later and they put it all together. And it, it takes them several hours at my house, but, um, I don't know how much time they put in it, into it at the school, but it's a lot. And so they did an exceptional job, and I want to make sure that they, I hope they see this. Lastly, I'd like to recognize Chris Knoll. G, District Athletic, Athletics Executive Assistant, respectively, for their tireless work at every football game at Gary Berry. They handle so much. For a moment, at both the Doherty and Palmer High Schools homecoming games, what you're seeing is the one at Palmer, um, the Flight for Life helicopter delivered the game ball into the stadium for both, for both of those football teams. This not only created a thrilling moment for everyone involved, but it also provided valuable training for the pilots. Um, they do this as a, as a training, um, excursion. That's probably not the right word, but it's a true, it really, it's a true win-win situation. Not a lot of people there yet, but they were coming in, and that, that all got packed in as the time went on. So, I wanted to thank everybody for all you do for the kids of District 11. Um, kids don't realize it, but they will someday, and, um, well, I realize it now, so, thank you with that. I yield back to President Mel Pakem. Thank you.
Thank you, and I was at that homecoming game, uh, and it was really exciting to see that helicopter land. Uh, and you also sent, uh, a note to Captain Thomas about the JROTC program at Doherty High School and how those students performed out there. They were remarkable. Yeah, thank you. And you do a remarkable job calling those games, too, out there. Director Art.
Thank you. Um, just to follow up on that conversation about the North Middle School, uh, 100th anniversary. One of the neat things was a tour of the basement, and we could see the old coal furnace down there. And I also enjoyed the letters, um, that the students had written, and they made prophecies. They were saying, this is what will be in the future. And I had to write it down so I could get this right. They were, they were going, they were changing at that time from a five-hour school day to a six-hour school day, and they were prophesying that students today would be going to school for about 10 hours a day. And I, you know, sympathies to them. And the way they were, they thought we would be, they, we, we would have electric cars, some of them, and flying cars. And, um, it was, it was really interesting, the way they thought we would be dressing. Women would be, or girls would be in silk dresses, and the boys would have linen trousers. So, lots of fun stuff if anybody gets to read those. Um, and compliments, as, um, Director Hayfley said, to our Facilities Department because they really went in and did a whole lot of, uh, new painting and cleaning, and the school looked fabulous. So, congrats to them for bringing that up, um, for a positive experience for everyone. I want to mention that the Foundation for District 11, which is a nonprofit that supports our students indirectly, essentially, by, um, giving grants to teachers and educators. They are accepting applications for their inspiring creativity educator grants, and the grants are meant to enrich student experiences in our schools. And the amount of funds that they will give out ranges, depending on the project and if it's for an individual teacher or a group. And, um, not just individual teachers or a group can apply. Also, parent and student groups can apply if they have a District 11 staff sponsor. So, you can go to their website and find more information there. It's, um, foundationford11.com, and you click on the Grants tab. So, I hope all the teachers out there listening, um, get inspired. They are updating the website, so if you see information from the past, just ignore that and go in there, get that application, and, um, apply. They do hope you'll use it. I wanted to note a visit I had. I missed the mayor's, um, address about the city because I went to the Green Summit, which, um, was recently held. And Superintendent Gall often references experiences and the words expose, explore, and experience. And it felt like those students were getting a little bit of all of that at this Green Summit. It was a student symposium that the district sponsored along with Schneider Electric, um, CS Utilities, the Air Force, UCCS, just a lot of community partners. And students from several of our schools, this was District 11 specific, they were engaged. Um, Director Jorgensen will like to know. They were doing things like drilling wood and hammers and nails, um, in their hands. And they were also checking, they were making batteries with different materials to see what worked, what didn't. And they learned about leadership, sustainability, related careers, composting, recycling. You get the idea. But really, they were, what was also inspiring was they were asked to take what they learned and do a school project. So, my hope is that one of these days, we will see those students coming back, and we will learn about their, um, projects in the future. Oh, and, um, President Mel Pakem joined me, and we got the T-shirt, so I had to wear mine. A couple other things, um, I did want to note the National School Lunch Week. I know Janine has left, and it was pretty neat to have the schools lunch dinner tonight. I also went yesterday because I wanted to see how count day was going, um, to Penrose Elementary, and I got to see their new secure entrance, which was, which was nice. They want to add a few decorations, make it a little more welcoming. But just like here, when we had our meal tonight, um, had a great salad bar, and those students are really getting exposed to, um, being able to serve themselves, which is a good talent for kindergartners especially, but also just the many healthy options that, um, District 11 offers. So, I would say we should all go have lunch with those students in celebration of the National School Lunch Week. And finally, um, I give this message out to everybody at graduation every year, and it seems very timely right now, a reminder to vote. Between now and the next time we're on this dais for a regular meeting, we will have, um, an election. Ballots will be sent out mid-October. National, state, and local candidates, many, many ballot issues, 14 alone for the state. So, please do your research, vote, and get those ballots back by 7:00 PM Tuesday, November 5th. And last but not least, if you want to check your registration or register, go to govotecolorado.gov. Thanks. End of PSA.
Thanks, Director Art. Uh, we do have a public hearing scheduled at 7:00 PM for priority improvement and turnaround schools. Do we have any people signed up for that? Okay, seeing none. And thank you for talking about that North Middle School. Uh, and both of you talked about that, uh, the turnout out there was amazing, the community turnout out there, and the new bathrooms that Superintendent Gall talked about at Swigert. I got to see them at North. And it was spectacular, so, uh, just some of the amazing things that are happening in our schools. Director Carey, you had your button pushed. We just did that. There is no public hearing at this time. The public hearing, USIPS, that's what that is, but there was no public comments at, at this point in time. But if you want to jump in at this time, you can jump in and give your board member a vote.
Yeah. Um, I'll make this very quick. Uh, this is mostly just in response to some emails that the board has gotten regarding some of the discussions that have taken place over work sessions over the last few weeks. I just want to remind everyone that the way a public system works is all of the work of the board has to be done in real time with the cameras on constantly. If we were so lucky to have simple decisions that were all upside, we, our work sessions would be six minutes long, and we would be out of here already. There's always trade-offs, and the decisions that we have to make are quite complicated with a lot of factors to weigh. And I can tell you, as a guy whose background is in research, coming up with new ideas always involves coming up with some bad ideas along the way. So, I just would like to remind the public that when you watch a work session, and I do encourage you to watch our work sessions, you're going to see discussion. It will occasionally get heated. Occasionally, people will throw out ideas that then get shot down. Occasionally, people will throw out ideas that end up being successful. You get to see it all play out in real time. That is your privilege as a citizen, watching a public institution at work. But remember, you get to see it all happen in real time. This isn't true for most institutions, but it's true in public education.
Thank you. Seeing no further public comments, uh, no more, no further board member reports. I'll wrap it up with my board member report and focus on a few school and community events that I was able to attend. Uh, this past weekend, I had the opportunity. Yeah, this past event, uh, do you want me to run it? You got it? Okay. This past weekend, I had the opportunity to attend the Palmer Alumni Breakfast and engage with several of our Palmer alumni graduates all the way back to the 1950s. It was fascinating to see the level of pride and engagement that the alumni had in Palmer High School. Directors Ott and Bankus joined me in browsing through several huge ledgers that had information and pictures from the past, all well-preserved for now and future generations. It was, uh, great to see the entire gamut of age ranges represented, all the way from our current students in their teens to the Palmer alumni, several of them in their 80s and 90s. And, um, uh, it was interesting to see the wisdom and knowledge that was transferred in those interactions to our students. And, uh, Mr. Abernathy from RTA was also there to share information about the Palmer renovation plans with the alumni group. Four Palmer alumni were intacted into the Hall of Fame, and I want to give a big shout out to Dr. Shaw and Mrs. Ferris. Uh, unfortunately, they are no longer with us, and, uh, their recognitions were presented to their families. And Mr. Pickham and Ms. Latimer-Hayer were present in person to receive their plaques. All have made significant contributions to our community, some even at the national level, and well-deserving of their recognition. That event was well-done, and it was great to see how the Palmer community is bonding together, coming together in preserving their traditions and history. Moving on to the transitioning from recognizing past contributions to our current student accomplishment. Doherty High School had their academic, academic award celebrations for students who have maintained a GPA of 3.75 or higher. Often, in our community, we celebrate our athletes and performers, which is great, and we want to do that, but we tend, tend to neglect the students who are thriving academically and striving daily to reach their full potential and beyond. It was great to see Doherty Principal Hinton acknowledge the accomplishments of these very many students and give them a moment in the spotlight. The Doherty Pro Start students served snacks and drinks, and the, one side of the gym was completely packed with proud parents and grandparents, family members, and staff who all had a role to play in elevating, uh, these students to excellence. Congratulations to all these students and their families. And I'll finish by sharing some pictures from the Coffee Cookies and Conversation Event that is ongoing. For the community, just for your information, we are taking turns visiting one or two schools every week to engage with our staff to say thank you to them for all their hard work, and more importantly, listen to their feedback, concerns, and opportunities for growth. Uh, usually, it's Superintendent Gall and, uh, a board director that is assigned to that school that stops by bright and early in the morning for a couple of hours. And I want to give a big shout out to Kyle and Hannah, who are in the middle out there with Renew Coffee. They are the team that brings the various selections, and you see the menu list out there. They do a fabulous job, uh, providing, uh, refreshments, uh, early morning refreshments for our staff. Last week, I got to engage with the staff at Martinez. I know a couple of other board directors have had similar opportunities to visit schools. Uh, I want to thank all the staff members that took the time to engage with us. Uh, your feedback will certainly be taken into consideration as we make future decisions. Uh, during these visits, Superintendent Gall also recognizes a teacher for going over and beyond in elevating our students to excellence. Tomorrow, I will be at Holmes Middle School with Superintendent Gall, and collectively as a board, we look forward to visiting with you in the coming days and weeks. That is my board report for the evening. Moving on to the next item, I'm going to, uh, under Special Report. We have the Palmer High School renovation update. Uh, I know that the RTA and Perkensement team are here, and they've been doing town hall surveys, workshops. Superintendent Gall, I will turn it up, turn it over to you to set up this report and conversation.
Yeah, it's just so exciting to have the team here to give the update on the engagement strategies and the feedback that they've been getting. Just a couple of shout-outs. First of all, thank you to the board. You picked the right partners. Uh, they have hit the ground running, and the feedback in the community by students, by staff, by community members, by local businesses have been, are, we have our stuff together, and this feels like a really thorough process. I really want to give shout-out to, uh, Dr. Jessica Wise and her leadership in helping navigate that.
that space to make sure that we are being accommodating to the needs of our community, especially in the tight timeline that we have. It's just been a real refreshing engagement strategy, and we're excited to give the board this update. To you both.
I'm just looking forward, it's an honor to be here tonight. I just want to introduce our team. Some of you have been at all of our events. If you haven't had a chance, they're going to tell you about how many more are upcoming in the month of October, so please come by. This is something very different for District 11, as far as I tell engagement, I can tell, engagement-wise. The number of touchpoints you're going to hear about tonight is pretty spectacular. The feeling in Palmer has been warm and welcoming. We're very thankful to the whole building for disrupting their schedules all the time to make this happen, and we're just looking forward to more. So without further ado, our team here tonight, RTA Architects, NES, Perkins Eastman, and we can't forget our student ambassador, Darnell Robinson.
Yes, thank you, Jessica. Just another shout-out for Jessica. She's been great to work with this team, and it's been seamless amongst us as we've worked together through this public engagement process. I'm Doug Abernathy with RTA Architects. I'm going to let the team introduce themselves as we go through the data that Superintendent Gall talked about. But before we even start that process, we hit the ground running. We've had a lot of engagement. There's more to come. The student perspective and the student voice has been very important in this process. And so through this process, we've actually selected four student ambassadors that are working with our team. And so they've worked with us in all the community engagement meetings, they've been at most, they've represented, they've ushered people to the library, they've assisted through this process. And so we actually have Darnell here tonight. We actually want him, before we even start, to talk about it from a student perspective. So we have two juniors, Darnell and Gabby, and are both juniors. We have Skilly, who's a sophomore, and we have Danya, who's a senior. So we have good perspective across it. It was recommended, it was a very difficult decision to select. We had nine applicants. We picked four of them, and they participated through this process, and it's been a joy for them to be involved in the process. So, Darnell, I want you to come up and start before Chris and Gabby jump in. So talk a little bit about your engagement and your participation.
Hi, I'm Darnell Robinson. Like they said, I'm one of the student ambassadors. First off, I just want to say how honored I was to be picked as, yes, sorry. I just want to say how honored I was to be picked as one of the student ambassadors. I know it was a lot of people who wanted the position, and to be picked was really great. So, yeah. The first thing that, like, my job pretty much is, is the team is really big on hearing what students have to say about the perspective, because they will be the ones who are there when the renovation is happening and even after the renovation. So the things that I have been hearing from students that are really interested in the renovations are, like, very interesting, because before the team came by and, like, told the students about what was really happening, like, with the renovation and with, like, students and stuff like that, not that many kids knew about what was really happening with the renovation. So when the team came by and gave, like, their ideas or wanted to hear what the students had to say, that's when you started to really hear a lot of students, like, be like, oh, we really are having a renovation happening, this is a real thing that's actually going to happen in the school, which is kind of crazy, because it's a big thing. But, um, yes, so I've just been really taking in what a bunch of students have been saying, like, what students really want to see happen in the school, and things that they don't want to change and things that they do want to change. A lot of students care a lot about fixing classrooms and just learning spaces in general for us, because some of our spaces in our school are not that great for learning environment at all. So they really just want to see an upgrade, but while keeping things historical, but they just mainly want to change, but something that won't affect them that much, so, yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, so it's been great. They've helped facilitate meetings, both with adults, with the community, and with, of course, their peers. And so when we go into rooms, there'll be times when Darnell or one of the other student ambassadors is like, hey, can I, can I present that? Hey, can I, can I do that part? Can I have, can I be engaged in that? And it's been, it's really been refreshing to work with them and to see them so engaged and passionate about it. So with that, I'm going to have Chris come up and start, and then Chris can introduce himself with NES, and then Gabby will come up and talk about the data with you guys.
Great. Thanks, Doug. My name is Chris Lieber. I'm with NES, and really, our focus has been on the community engagement side of things. And I think we may have lost our presentation. I may, did I, I may have done that, I'm not sure. You know, I, I also really want to give a shout-out to student ambassadors. They really have become an integral part of our team, and when we have questions such as how best to connect with the students, how best to reach out, to have the four of them as part of our team to be able to help provide guidance, has been really, really spectacular. We could have the next, okay, thank you. When we, when we started this process, we made several commitments. And one of those was to really focus on community outreach, both in terms of breadth and in terms of depth. And we'll talk a little bit about the ways that our community and has really, really responded to that. But I also want to emphasize that we set some pretty specific goals around focusing on a really open and transparent process, a process that really encourages involvement, and what we hope is, is opportunity to really build, build trust and, and hope for what the, what the future can be. So, so far, in terms of individual touchpoints, we're approaching 20,000, and that is in large, larger spect, oop, we already moved there, to our ability to work with different partners, really, in, in our community helped get the word out. And whether that be the D11 Network reaching out to parents and students, whether that be the Downtown Partnership reaching out to community members, whether that be a Kono reaching out to, to neighbors and neighborhood associations, or direct mailing to some of our immediate neighbors around Palmer High School, all of those methods have been used to really connect with folks. And so this first phase has all been about listening and, and asking, asking questions of the community, and I can report back that our community cares deeply about Palmer. And, and that, whether that means about its history and its culture, or about its future. We've heard some really exciting and passionate stories along the way. With that, I mentioned this breadth, so that has been that larger, again, broader community outreach, and we've seen response to that. We'll talk a little bit more about the survey, but 1,400 different responses to that. We've conducted town hall meetings. We've also done focus groups where we've been able to get in, and again, that's about the, the depth, where we can ask some of those more poignant questions. But as part of that, some of those areas that we've focused on, meetings with students in the classroom, and we want to say thanks for carving out time to allow that to happen, meetings with, with teachers and staff at Palmer. We had a focus group specifically for neighbors, a focus group specifically for downtown businesses and folks that were adjacent, and, and we're continuing our outreach with all of these groups. I should also say with our alumni, also a very important part of that, that continuum. So again, reaching out in a variety of ways. I want to emphasize that we've heard, we're beginning to hear a lot of consistency across, across the spectrum from these various groups, and whether that be, again, from the survey with the 1,400 responses, and you can see some of those individual, or if you will, common themes that are beginning to, to come together and bubble up. At this time, what I'd like to do though is I'd like to introduce Gabby to come forward and begin kind of a little bit deeper dive into some of the things that we've been hearing through the process. So, thank you.
Good, thank you. Hello, Superintendent Gall, President Malpakum, and esteemed board members. Thank you for your time today. As Chris mentioned, my name is Gabby Bermea. I am with Perkins Eastman. I am really grateful to kind of explain to you all what these 10 major points have been. This is out of the 1,400 that we've had between the individual stakeholders of the survey and the students and staff, between essentially the last week of August through this last week of September. That 1,800 is actually, has surpassed the 20,000 mark. We did meet with departments on Monday, and then we had a number of other alumni breakfasts that happened on Saturday, like we heard earlier. So here are some of the themes. I'm going to hit the high levels of it. Preserving Palmer's historical architecture and cultural significance, providing safe and secure outdoor learning environments, creating a flexible and adaptable campus, one that we heard very strongly from the survey, engage the community in the design process with transparency, and that is the accountability that this team will continue to move forward with as we continue community engagement and move into kind of beyond listening into the actual display of the feedback circle. Support diverse learning styles and pathways, which we're really excited to kick off tomorrow and Friday at being a part of the visioning sessions for Palmer High School. Thank you, Nicole, for organizing those. Encouraging collaboration and innovation, and then, of course, maximizing student and staff well-being. With the community touchpoints, you're probably asking yourself, well, where are you getting this 19,000? You saw earlier, 18 of that is coming from the email listserv and the survey itself. In addition to those individual in-person touchpoints, we have the Downtown Partnership Breakfast that counted for about 30%, and then the number of student engagement, community town hall, staff engagement. This is intended to be a living pie chart, so we hope to bring this back to you at the end of this community engagement session for phase one for the master planning and show you here is really where that has continued to grow with a second survey planning to be launched in October. With the survey itself, there have been over 1,140 respondents that included student, alumni, teacher, staff. You can get the full report. That's sitting at about 54 slides that I'd rather not take y'alls time up today to go through, in addition to the number of in-person surveys, but all of that information is available to you. And what we really want to say, thank you to Principal Burke and to the entire Palmer High School administration, is if you see that yellow, that is the number of students who have engaged with these surveys. That's the student voice, particularly that got a time out of the day not only to participate with our in-person sessions, but to participate in this survey, which is just invaluable when it comes to how we approach the design for the future of Palmer. And of course, alumni, teacher, staff, parent guardian, you'll see that, this pie chart actually starts to shift a little bit when we look at the town hall engagement here shortly. So I did want to hit the highlights as far as what's been the most important, so this first one we're going to look at is the student responses. Over 55% of that 700-plus student group voted for improving classroom conditions, meaning daylight and size, as their number-one priority. We had a group of other for number two, three, outdoor amenities and outdoor spaces, four, improving the student entry experience, and five, preserving history and traditions. This gives us a great opportunity to have parallel conversations between all of our user groups. Next, I want to call out that this is the teacher and staff respondents specifically. In number one, we heard improved infrastructure. Again, all of these are going to be things that are so inspiring to see in a parallel between all of the user groups, regardless if you are a student or if you're a teacher who's been teaching there for 30 years. Improved furniture and fixtures, improved daylight in classrooms, improved building layout, and then improved outdoor amenities and spaces, pedestrian safety and daylight. That was a very, it was a three-way tie for priority number five, if you can't tell with all those slashes. You can see the full rankings to the opposite side as well. So in having a general voice being very important with this, you will see a number of actual pull quotes from the survey being integrated into this survey response. Major themes included improved climate control, that is the, we need AC in our classrooms, modernize the Palmer's interiors, concerns on the athletic facilities and gym improvements, the desire for better access moving between the buildings, bathroom facility updates, parking and traffic safety, and of course, accessibility has been a major undercurrent throughout the entirety of our conversations. When asked, what does this successful renovation look like, we heard retain the historical architecture, but the part I really want to focus on is strike a balance between maintaining the school's traditions for history while preparing it for future generations. You can go into the full tie of this later. But in the meantime, I want to go ahead and pass the last five minutes to, you can hear our in-person engagement strategy, so I'm going to ask Chris to come back up. Thank you all very much.
One of the cornerstones of our process, of course, is town hall gatherings. And our first town hall meeting, we had over 100 folks attend, and what was, what we were really pleased with was kind of the distribution of interests that, that attended and are reflected here on this pie chart. Whether we, alumni, parents, students, staff, community members, former staff, and, and that, that meeting, and I know that some of you were able to, to attend, but it was specifically designed to bring people around tables and have conversations about, very poignantly, about, about the past, about what's special about Palmer today from a history and a culture perspective, as well as those conversations about, about the future, and asking folks to, to work together to help inform, again, those specific questions. If you could advance, please. Great. Some of the things that we heard when we asked about how can we best honor the past and honor the, the traditions, this idea, and this really came from, obviously from participants, but this idea of capitalizing on views and kind of the outdoors and the connection to, to Colorado, and of course, historically, there was a place to do that on the third floor of Palmer, and so there was some reminiscence about that. The Alumni Museum, which exists today, but doesn't get a lot of visibility, it's kind of tucked away up there on the third floor, this idea of bringing that forward for community access and community benefit. We talked, we heard a lot about specific landmarks or, or pieces of, if you will, the architecture that are really special and meaningful to folks, whether that be the front nine, the front doors of Palmer, the clock, the bell, the courtyard, and some of the other architectures. So it was great to get some of that specific information. And as many, as you certainly know, when you think about the, the building and the progression of development over time, there is the original 1939 building. And so what we heard from the community was that that portion was particularly of, of interest to certainly some of the folks who attended. And then, of course, we also asked questions about, really about the future, and about how can we, together, come up with a great learning space for, for students and, and for staff. And some of the things we heard, these common themes, were about design flexibility and also about the use of, of spaces for multiple purposes. This idea of a student commons and outdoor space to provide, again, places for both students and staff, connecting learning experiences to the history and, and the culture so that, that that becomes really integral. A lot about inclusivity and accessible design, and, and also, again and again, we heard a desire for this connection to outdoor light and, and being able to bring that into, into the learning spaces. So I think at this point, am I turning it back over to you, Gabby?
My turn?
Doug's going to come up and talk a little bit about specifically student and staff experiences and, and that portion of our process.
So, so there's a picture to show that Darnell was leading some of those discussions and the student ambassadors. We met specifically with Student Council, the Palmer Futures Committee, we've been participating with them also, and they've been a great conduit. And we continue to hear some of the same themes from the students that we hear from the staff and we've heard from the community, and so building on the opportunities that we have in Colorado with outdoor space, access to technology. And the more we dive into this, the more we learn about some of the things that are impediments in the existing building, whether it's technology or accessibility or those things, and those have started to come out of the conversation, as Gabby has talked about, and those are going to be keys as we move forward for the design process. And so just a little bit about the gallery walk, about inspiring spaces, about the connection to the surroundings at Palmer that we don't have in all of the spaces, really leveraging those spaces and creating high-performance 21st century learning spaces. You can see by the number of dots and votes where we get those connections to high-quality learning environments and outdoor environments, and flexible learning environments that happen throughout the building, and we can't do that right now in a 1939 building as it exists right now. So to wrap it up, we're down to 30 seconds, so we're doing pretty well here, right? So what's next as a group? Gabby talked about this. The next two days, we have a visioning session with, with Krista and her staff, and Nicole and Brandon are going to help facilitate that visioning session over the next two days, which will be really exciting, that we'll continue to talk about the educational strategies and the vision for Palmer for the next 50 years. After that, we have a the next fifty years. After that, we have a series of meetings. We met with all the departments on Monday. Every department in the building, we met with on Monday throughout the course of the day. We've got feedback from them. The key dates that you really need to be thinking about are the end of the month on the twenty-ninth, the twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, and thirtieth, so the evening of the twenty-eighth, in the student, in the auditorium at Palmer High School, we'll be unveiling some of the master plan concepts. We'll probably look at dozens between now and then, but we're going to come up with three, three different master plan solutions for the Palmer campus long-term, and we're going to present those to the community on the twenty-eighth. On the twenty-ninth, we'll, we'll actually meet with staff after school, we'll present the feedback that we get from the community on the twenty-ninth, and get their feedback specifically from staff and share the, the observations that we got from the community on the evening of the twenty-eighth. And then, again, we want, the student ambassadors will be participating in all of this process, but on the thirtieth, we'll actually be meeting with student council again and presenting that information to student council and, and follow up during the course of that day to, to continue to meet with their other partners that Chris has talked about. We want to get that feedback. After that meeting, then we'll really see where we are as a group. Are we do have a clear consensus of direction, and can we move forward? Do we need to have another meeting before, before Thanksgiving? And then what do we do with that information? Again, is to honor this transparency process, this information will be shared with everyone, including the board, and then that information will be, just like Gabby did great reflecting that information that we've collected, we'll reflect that communication back to the board and the community. With that, we'll wrap it up and open it up for questions.
Okay. Thank you. I was at some of those town hall meetings, and it was well facilitated and thoughtful conversation, and you talked about listening, and that was respectful listening, too. Sometimes those exchanges can get emotional and heated because they bring passion into that conversation, and these are people that are invested in our schools, but how you guys navigated those situations respectfully, listening and gathering that feedback, that was well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Bankus.
I wanted to go back to preservation, and one of the things you mentioned was the front nine. Were you meaning that the doors, the, the entry doors is a point of preservation of interest?
No, not necessarily preservation of interest, but it was, it was continually expressed by both alumni and students and staff as a significant point in the building, and it was continued to identify, hey, the front nine is something that we think about. And I think it's because of the connection to downtown and Acacia Park and that ability to go through that location in the building, but that's the, that's the term that they use to go through that front door into the community and make that connection is that location in the building is the thing that they continue to. Nobody said specifically, hey, we need to, we need to take those forty-year-old hollow metal doors and keep those because they're so precious.
So you're talking about front-facing toward Palmer and toward that town.
That's correct. And I think that's, that's the way we'd interpret it, because that kept, that term kept coming up, and that connection, we kept hearing as a significant connection that the students and staff sort of focused on as a group.
And I'm glad to have you clear that up, because I know that there was a conversation or comments being made about using Weber doors.
Weber doors on Weber.
And so the orientation of the bill, so I'm glad to clear that up. The orientation of the building is not changing.
Well.
At this point.
At this point, no.
Because people are bringing it up. The second question I had was when you were showing the photos of different plans that could have happened, are those the dots that, that the students had put on, the number of dots?
That is correct. That is a combination of both staff and students, so.
Can we go back to that?
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, there you go. That one right there. Yes. Yeah, so that's a combination of both student and staff voting. So throughout a course of one day, Chris, Gabby, and I, Darnell was participating along with our student ambassadors. We went to eight classes that day, and we went through what we would call a gallery walk, where we showed them different educational environments and things that they were inspired by, and they got a vote with dots. We did the same thing with the staff and had them vote with dots on spaces that they connected with or thought was going to be appropriate educational environments for the future of Palmer, and so this is the summary of that data that Gabby put together.
The thing that draws my attention is the high number of votes that, at one fourteen and one fifteen for both of those areas, one for view, which is a new thought, which really would make a huge difference to the environment there at Palmer, and especially one fifteen, when we're talking about the entryway into that space. That, to me, would require a great deal of ingenuity to take what's already there and remodel it so that it has that broad entryway that's welcoming, has sunshine, has meeting areas. It's, and I'm glad to see the high number of votes that it got, because it's really a change.
Yeah, the, the really great thing about that space, I got a chance to visit that a couple of weeks ago, is that we have a historic building, a little bit older than Palmer High School, but blending the new learning environment into a historic building and how those two things came together to really, it's sort of one plus one equals three, because you get that historical context with modern learning environments. Would it be exactly like that? No. It'll be a Palmer-specific, but it, it was great inspiration, and it, like you said, it translated between both students and staff were sort of gravitated towards that opportunity.
Thank you.
Director Art.
Thank you. The, the, a following slide or two from this one, it mentions the schedule, and November has a mention of the steering committee and a steering committee meeting. Does, that steering committee doesn't exist yet, does it?
That steering committee is getting oh-so-close at this point. So over the last several weeks, we've actually talked about the formation of that and the, the, the structure of that steering committee, the number of participants, how we can get appropriate representation across the community for that steering committee. So just like you've seen in the, the slides that Chris and Gabby presented, that we want a good cross-section of, associated with Palmer, so neighbors, downtown partner, staff, leadership from the, from the school, students, of course, and so we're right now in the, right now finalizing that document, so that in the next week and a half or two weeks, we'll have that document finalized, so that we can release that to the public, that sort of shares the criteria for those, for those, for those members that will sit on that committee, and sort of the expectations of the groups that they would represent, and the process that will come throughout this, because the steering committee will meet for a longer period of time, and so we're, we're right on the hint, we're right on the cusp of issuing that information here.
Okay. So it sounds like it will include a job description possibly, the expectation as well?
Yeah, there's going to, there's going to be some criteria around being able to be representative of a core constituency of the project, whether it be neighborhood or downtown or students. We want to make sure that those folks that want to participate bring that perspective and are connected to those other, to their constituency, so they can bring that feedback objectively to the group.
And expectations that they will show up and, and represent.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right, and, and so I assume that the district will share that information out when?
Yeah, we're, we're working with Jessica, we're working with Jessica on a plan right now for that, and that information will be shared when the, when it's ready, I guess, from, from Jessica's perspective and the district's perspective.
Appreciate it.
Any other comments or questions at this time? Thank you. I think you guys are doing a phenomenal job engaging with our community, and when this process started, there was so many community feedback, and they wanted to lean in and provide information, and you are navigating this environment really well. We look forward to further updates, and when possible, I'm sure board members will attend some of the community town hall meetings as well to just listen in to some of those conversations. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for all of you for being here as well, and the student ambassador, and Carrie, our gratitude to all the other student ambassadors who are on that committee as well. Is there?
Thanks, Principal Burke, as well.
Great.
That's the end of our special report.
Okay. Moving on to the next agenda item, it's adoption of consent items. Director Art, can you please make the motion to adopt the consent items?
Yes. I move that the Board of Education adopts all consent items as designated in the agenda. The consent items are F2, Resolution 2025-08, National School Lunch Week, October fourteenth through eighteenth, 2024. F3, Personnel Recommendations, October second, 2024. F4, Approval of September fourth, 2024, Regular Meeting Minutes. And F5, Approval of September eleventh, 2024, Special Meeting Minutes.
Moved and seconded. I just want to give a shout-out to Human Resources that put together that personnel recommendations. It's more really concise, and the format that was used is much easier to read than what was there previously. Roll call, please, Ms. Olson.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Haley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Mel Packham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Art?
Aye. The consent items was adopted as presented. Moving on to action items, the first action item is 2024-2025 Unified District Improvement Plan. Director Haley, can you please make the motion for action item G1?
Yes, I move that the Board of Education approves the Unified District Improvement Plan for submission to the Colorado Department of Education.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. This information was introduced to the board during the September eleventh special meeting, and then reviewed in detail during the September eighteenth work session. Superintendent Gall, any additional information do you want to share with the board at this time?
I just want to thank the DAC and the Accreditation Committee for their inputs and their support, and particularly for the board members who painstakingly went through line by line, making sure that we got apples to apples and the right way for us to project the very strong work that we're extremely proud of. And to Dr. Colicky and all of the team that are here that have done that, and I'll package the USIPS into it as well, and particularly the principals that are here to represent their schools tonight.
So thank you. Dr. Colicky, do you have anything to add at this time?
I'd like to say thank you to the DAC and the partnership, Courtney, Courtney Hafner, leading that work with DAC Accreditation. It is a lot of work in a very short period of time, so I just want to say thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for your work.
And I think Ms. Clausen wanted to add something from Courtney. She wanted to share some feedback to the board. Ms. Clausen?
Yep. Hello. So I can read Courtney's email or letter to you guys, so I will go ahead.
Speak into the microphone.
Oh, sorry.
There you go.
All right. I've got Courtney's notes here. She had to leave and be a parent, so that's what the life of volunteers. So in her behalf, as the Chair of the District Accountability Committee Accreditation Subcommittee, the committee is made up of volunteers who are district staff, parents, and community members. We have met twice a month in August and September to ensure that our charges of reviewing school improvement plans of our priority improvement and turnaround school were completed on a timeline where they could be ready to be approved by the board today. In addition, this committee's charges include reviewing the district improvement plan, which also, also be approved by the board today. Our charges, our committee, we are myself as the chair, gave feedback on all these plans to the administrators in charge of the plan as well as the board. Today, I want to focus on the process of the reviews and the idea that the community understands the links that our volunteers at the DAC Accreditation Subcommittee go through the illicit community input on the plans while respecting the time of the district staff. Over the course of the couple, last couple months, we have reviewed three school improvement plans for turnaround and priority improvement schools. These are Adams, Mitchell, and Galileo. There are two additional schools that are requesting, are requested to reconsider, and if necessary, we will review these plans later if those, those schools are covered in Edison. Prior to the meeting, we were, reviews were discussed. Our team reviewed the USIPS, also the school improvement plans, on their own time. Individual committee members reviewed the plans and provided feedback via a Google form. The form was then used when giving feedback to the principals at the meeting. The review feedback sessions were conducted in person as a support to school teams prior to their presentation to the board. The thought behind is having, having these particular reviews in person was that these are the USIPS of the schools with the most needs. To our minds, we warranted the dedication of our time to review in person. These administrators came to the table with a positive attitude, open minds, and a willingness to accept constructive criticism from the committee. The conversations were productive, and it was my impression that all walked away feeling supported and with valuable feedback that they could use to improve their plans. Some themes that were recognized in all three schools were challenges with attendance, behavior, and parental involvement. In addition, at the time of the writing of these plans and the review of these plans, the school did not have an existing or productive school accountability committee. Two schools didn't have a SAC at all. The DAC leadership team has made a commitment to support schools without SAC this year and is, and is an attempt to get them to more involvement. In addition, we digitally reviewed the USIPS of schools that were on year one of the priority improvement status. These schools were Palmer, Twain, Zweigert, and Mann. In order to the best and most efficient use of staff and volunteer time, these USIPS were reviewed online and at their own time by the accreditation team members, and myself coletting feedback and give it to, bring it to the principals. In addition, reviewing USIPS, our charges state that we reviewed the district improvement plan. The process for this review was quite challenging. When we first convened to review the plan, it was missing almost the entire document with the exception of major improvement strategies, because this is a dedicated group of volunteers who see the importance of this work. They were able to convene one week later, giving the district team time to complete the plan. We felt that this is a plan that heavily empathizes academics and is rooted in the continuation of last year's successful systems. Following this meeting, the feedback was provided to the board as well as the superintendent. As the UDEP is a living document, the Accreditation Committee will continue to fulfill our charges to monitor implementation of this document and work with the board and district admin to create a feedback loop where our questions, concerns, and suggestions are given to those in charge of the plan. This is my, means Courtney's, third year of doing USIPS and UDEP review. In my opinion, the process of USIP review, once the plans arrived at accreditation, was smooth. The UDEP process was challenging, though we were ultimately able to give necessary feedback to the superintendent and the board. Thank you for your support of our work. Those were Courtney's work.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the work that the committee put in and convey our appreciation to Courtney and the team too out there. But we've discussed this at the work session at length. Any questions, comments that you have before roll call? Director Art.
Thank you. I do want to acknowledge that I think most of you probably saw some last-minute suggestions on, on DAC wording from me, and I believe that has been accommodated, which to me is a better wording of our high school scores situation. So that hasn't made it into the DAC, sorry, not the DAC, the District Improvement Plan that we will be adopting, but please understand that that will be posted, I believe, later with that correction. Is that true?
That's correct. We're ready to submit those corrected items to the state.
Appreciate it. Thank you for taking care of that.
And thank you for your feedback, Director Art. Any other comments at this time? Okay. So thank you. Thank you for all the work that several people put into this, both at the district administrative level, several of our volunteers looking into this and coming up with a robust district improvement plan. Like, it was mentioned, this is a living document, and it's necessary that we need to monitor it in a timely manner and make sure if any tweaks need to be made based on results that we are getting, and the action steps are implemented in a timely manner. Thank you for all the work. With that, roll call, please, Ms. Olson.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Haley?
Aye.
Director Hayfley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Mel Packham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ah?
The I's have it, the Unified District Improvement Plan has been approved by the board for submission to the Colorado Department of Education. I want to mention one more thing. From last year's UDEP to this year's UDEP, if you look at that, the district has moved in a positive direction by three point nine points, and that is really notable achievement, and that corroborates the strategies that we are using, and the district is moving in the right direction. And that's a significant movement in one year. You often don't see that kind of jump in one year, which was noted by the Department of Education as substantial. Thank you for all the work that you guys are doing. Moving to the next item on the action agenda item, this is Unified School Improvement Plans. These offer the priority, identify priority improvement and turnaround schools. Director Jorgensen, can you please make the motion for action item G two?
Yes, I move that the Board of Education approves the Unified School Improvement Plan for submission to the Colorado Department of Education.
For the D.
Schools designated as priority improvement or turnaround.
Second.
Moved and seconded, and for clarity again, these three schools are Adams Elementary, Galileo Middle School, and Mitchell High School. And again, this information was presented to the board during the September fourth regular board meeting and then reviewed in detail with the area superintendent, school principals, and additional school leadership during the September eleventh work session. Superintendent Gaul, any additional information? I also see the school principals and.
Yeah, they are all here in attendance. Thank you for your extra time and your efforts, but just particularly to the piece that you saw earlier, that prior schools in Audubon and Twain, both having been going through this non-action and action process and putting these plans together, then just in very short order being here, celebrated for their work. So, we believe in the strategies of the district. We know that they work at the school level. Continue to tell us what you need more of. I know Principal Scott is expert at that, and so I appreciate our very direct lines of communication. We are changing to support the needs of our schools because that is where, that is equity is putting your money, where your, where your actions are. So, no further things from the schools at this time.
Thank you. Any feedback, comments from the board? Seeing none. Thank you all for being here and. Director Nelson?
I encourage you to stay connected and let us know how we can support you all. Thank you for being here tonight. I hope that you can get some rest because tomorrow you're leading a school, and that's really valuable work, so we appreciate what you're doing in helping students.
Thank you, and I know this can be a challenging conversation, as Superintendent Gaul talked about, we had two schools that were in priority improvement and turnaround schools status earlier this, in the board meeting, and those two schools were recognized for their growth and achievement this year. So, sometimes they say it gets dark before the dawn, and that maybe it looks dark now, but there is a way out of what it is, and the district has clear strategies. We are not reinventing the wheel. It requires commitment, and the board is fully behind each one of you, and you are the building leaders chosen to lead your schools at this moment in time. And so, lead strong and keep in touch and provide us the feedback that you need to, and good luck, and we hope that next year, all of you are no longer on this. We've consistently reduced that number from fifteen to seven to three now, and hopefully next year, you guys are going to be in the performance status and beyond. Thank you. With that, roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Hayfley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Mel Packham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ah? Aye.
The I's have it, the Unified School Improvement Plans for these three priority improvement and turnaround schools has been approved by the board for submission to the Colorado Department of Education. Resolution, Supporting Education Support Professionals Week, October fourteenth to Director Nelson, can you please read resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash oh seven and make the motion to approve agenda item G three?
All right, I move, oh, resolution first?
Yes.
Sorry. Okay, whereas Colorado Springs School District eleven Education Support Professionals are a valuable and essential part of Colorado's educational system by providing support to our schools and facilities and assisting students in reaching their academic achievement objectives. Whereas, Education Support Professionals provide educational assistance in the classroom, maintain clean and healthy environments, sustain the efficiency of district property, transport students safely, prepare and serve nutritious meals, support ever-changing technology, and provide customer service to students, parents, district, and community members. Whereas, Education Support Professionals, through their dedicated efforts, contribute significantly to providing a safe learning and working environment, serve as integral members of the building team and culture, and should therefore be honored for their invaluable contributions. Whereas, it is appropriate for Colorado Springs School District eleven to recognize the vital role classified school employees hold in promoting student achievement and to salute these employees for the dedicated service that each one provides to the district's students and communities. Now, therefore, be it resolved, we, the members of Colorado Springs School District eleven Board of Education, do hereby proclaim the week of October fourteenth through eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, as Education Support Professionals Week, and encourage parents, students, teachers, and administration to join us in recognizing and honoring these dedicated professionals. Signed this day, second of October, two thousand and twenty-four. I move that the Board of Education approves resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash zero seven, recognizing October fourteenth dash eighteen, two thousand and twenty-four, as Education Support Professionals Week, ESP Week.
Second.
Moved and seconded multiple times by several board members. I see Dr. Comfort is here and Mr. Cook is also here. Yep, please, share.
Whenever I introduce myself to a new group of people, I always talk about my past positions, and I always say that my first position in public education and probably the most important was that of a paraprofessional, a special education paraprofessional. Once an ESP, always an ESP. But nobody will speak to the importance or celebration of ESPs better than their president, Mr. Kevin Cook, so I'll defer my time to him.
Thank you, Board. Superintendent Gaul, who's not with us at this moment, and Mr. Mel Packham and the rest of the board, in all respect. I'm gonna get a little closer to the mic somewhere in this mask. You don't know how much we, we appreciate this board, this superintendent, and the support that you guys give us. This week, the week of the, of the celebration will be in fall break, so what I, what we like to do is we like to turn challenges into something positive. So, in that conversation, we realized that there were going to be a lot of ESP out on break during that time period, so we, the idea came up, said, hey, we make it ESP month, so we're gonna be celebrating the entire month for ESP. We do understand that nationwide is also Principals Month. So, we're, of course, we're not creating any type of competition unless we're competing with ourselves, and that's, and that's what we like to do. We don't compete outside of ourselves, so we're gonna be celebrating with the principals this month and, and more than likely through the rest of the years, how I do it, but we really want to thank you very much, and we're looking at bringing back student versus staff type of sports and student versus principals, student versus, staff versus staff, you know, just to set a precedence that we are, in order to succeed, we must compete with ourselves first, and anything outside of that is irrelevant. So, I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any thoughts or comments? Director Bankus?
As a former teacher, as a former principal, I want to thank you and all of the ESP that you represent for the valuable service they provide in keeping our schools open, clean, assisting in the classroom, providing a quality lunch, being able to count on that extra set of hands, whether it falls within the scope of dealing with the situation, or whether it's just enhancing and enriching the educational environment. So, thank you to you and all the ESPs who deserve this to be loved so well.
Thank you. Well said, and often, we talk about our students being known in our schools and having a trusted adult to turn to, and quite often, that trusted adult is an ESP. So, you form an integral part of our team, so thank you, and you, hopefully you get appreciated throughout the school year, especially this month. And to our community, reach out, parents, reach out to our bus drivers, and maybe it's just a simple note from your child, celebrating these hardworking employees. Roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Hayfley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Mel Packham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ah? Aye.
The I's have it, the board has approved. Eighteenth as ESP Week. The next item on the agenda is National Principal Appreciation Month. Director Bankus, can you please read the resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash oh six and then make the motion to approve agenda item G four?
Whereas, it is the primary responsibility of School District, Colorado Springs School District eleven Board of Education and the superintendent to reserve and improve resources for schools so that all students have access to a quality education and foundation for a successful future. And whereas, school principals play an integral part as instructional leaders in the education and growth of students in elementary, middle, and secondary schools in Colorado Springs School District eleven. And whereas, school principals are responsible for promoting education and building relationships to ensure that each student receives services that meet their needs to excel in the classroom and life. And whereas, school principals face many challenges in supporting and educating our young people, and it is through their perseverance and passion that Colorado Springs School District eleven continues to produce quality, career-ready students. And whereas, we will continue to encourage, support, and recognize our school principals who continually ensure a positive impact on students and the educational process. Therefore, the Colorado Springs School District eleven Board of Education does hereby proclaim the month of October, two thousand and twenty-four, as Principal Appreciation Month. I move the Board of Education approves resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash zero six, endorsing October, two thousand and twenty-four, as National Principal Appreciation Month.
Second. Moved and seconded. Area Superintendent Joyner is, are you going to share a word with us?
Very good.
Sure.
Principals are heroes. Principals are friends. They have huge hearts. They lead us through successes. They lead us through challenges. Nobody quite understands the role and responsibility of being a principal unless you've sat in the seat. And as you run into our school principals throughout the month of October, please make it a point to just say thank you. Go one step further and let them know the specific reason that you appreciate them. The gift of appreciation and being noticed is one of the greatest gifts a leader can receive. So, thank you to all of our principals for making District eleven the premier school district in Colorado.
Thank you.
So, thoughts from board members? I think Director Bankus already addressed principals in her board member report. Any further comments? Seeing none. Thank you for all our principals. They work long hours, go over and beyond. Their job doesn't end at three o'clock or four o'clock. They usually stay up much later into the evenings and the weekends to put out fires, wear multiple hats, keep our students and staff supported and safe. And with the focus on academic achievement in our schools, they are ensuring that our students are also academically thriving. So, thank you for all that our principals do. Again, to our community, reach out and thank our principals and show your appreciation to them. Roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Mel Packham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ah?
The, the resolution appreciating principals has been approved by the board. Moving on to the next agenda item, Director Carey, can you please make the motion for action item G five, which is the District Accountability Committee and its subcommittees' membership rosters?
I move that the Board of Education approves the member names of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five District Accountability Committee, DAC Budget Subcommittee, and DAC Accreditation Subcommittee and charges as submitted.
Second.
Moved and seconded, and this item has been discussed by the board at work sessions. Is there any additional information that you need to provide us at this point in time? Board, do you have any questions or concerns or discussions at this point in time? Director Ah?
Thank you. I just want to recognize the DAC and the subcommittees that as we talk about operationalizing our parent involvement policy or engagement policy, AKB, part of the rights and responsibilities, what we seek to provide and what we ask them in terms of responsibilities to give back to us. I went back and I looked at it, and it's, the top one is voice. Collaborate and communicate with parents, that's our role, to continuously improve educational quality and student experiences. Also, respect transparency and engagement, along with choice and safety. But those, those four, voice, respect, transparency, and engagement, strike me as something that the DAC is heavily engaged with, and so I just wanted to give an additional appreciation for not just the parents, but the community members who are serving on that, and our staff, some of whom are not paid, I believe, to have this additional responsibility. But thank you, and I'm glad that we have, of course, we're meeting the state requirements with our charges, but also a few extra that the board is focused on. So, thank you for your role.
Thank you. Seeing of Director Nelson?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Clausen and the rest of the committee members that helped participate in the Design Thinking Lab and just the work that you did over the summer and then additional, sorry. My, my voice fades in the evenings after having coughed for a month now. Just the additional work that you did to help ensure that the work that, that all of our committees are doing and all of our volunteers and our staff, that it is value additive and meaningful, and so just appreciate the extra time and effort, and thank you to the various subcommittee chairs that are willing to step up. I know there was a question by a community member about an employee being a co-chair, and that employee is a substitute in the district, and given just the, the willingness of that individual to step up, I think it seems the board is willing to sort of, I guess, either allow an acceptance to that guideline that's in the DAC bylaws, and so just appreciate the willingness of those volunteers to step forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion by the board? Thank you. Roll call, please. Oh, you have a comment to make, please, Ms. Clausen?
Thank you. I just want to thank all of our volunteers that be on this committees, and I, since we're having the ear of the community, I just want to say we have three openings at the DAC still. We have, we need still one high school admin, and we need one parent from an opportunity school. We have parents that are serving and have also kids at opportunity schools, but we have one slot open for someone, and then we need one person associated with higher education. So, we might need a little help to find those three, so we appreciate help with that. And if parents are interested in joining the subcommittees, those have no limits for parent slots, so any parent who wants to join Accreditation or Budget Subcommittee, just fill out the application that's on the DAC website on D eleven. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that feedback, and the community heard your request out there, and we also appeal to our community, if you fit into any one of those categories that Ms. Clausen highlighted, please do reach out to Ms. Clausen or Ms. Trudy Tool through the district website. Roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpackham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The I have it. And its Subcommittee Roster and Charges have been approved by the board. The next item is the District Personnel Performance Evaluation Advisory Council Membership and Charge. Director Ott, can you please make the motion for action item G6?
Yes. I move that the Board of Education approves the fiscal year 2024-2025 member names and charge for the District Personnel Performance Evaluation Advisory Council as submitted.
Moved and seconded. Again, this information was presented to the board earlier in September at our regular board meeting and then reviewed in detail at a September 18 work session. Any additional information at this point in time? Okay. Board, any additional comments or questions at this point in time? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Hayfley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpackham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The I have it. The charges and the membership for the District Personnel Performance Committee has been approved by the board. The next item is Benefits Insurance Committee Membership and Charge. Director Hayfley, can you please make motion for action item G7?
Yes, I move that the Board of Education approves the fiscal year 2024-2025 member names and charges for the Benefits Insurance Committee as submitted.
Superintendent Gall, anything?
No.
Okay. Board, any comments or questions on it? Okay. Roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Hayfley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpackham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
I have it. The Benefits Insurance Committee Membership and Charge has been approved by the board. The last item for action this evening is the Millevy Override Oversight Committee Membership and Charge. Director Jorgensen, can you please make the motion for action item G8?
Fiscal year 2024-2025 member names and charge for the Millevy Override Oversight Committee as submitted.
Second. What's that done to the start? Any?
Okay. Any? Director Ott?
Thank you. I just want to note that as far as committees go, that could use additional members, this is one of them as well. And I assume they can reach out to us and we will point them in the right direction where the superintendent would. Thanks.
Okay. Please, if you want to serve in this capacity and provide this accountability piece for the MLO money that the community has graciously approved, please do reach out to us. Roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Hayfley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpackham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The I have it. The membership and charges for the Millevy Override Oversight Committee has been approved by the board. Moving on to the non-action items, the first non-action item that we have is Policy BDF, which is Advisory Committees. The board reviewed this information and discussed the policy revision last week during the September 25 work session. Dr. X, you hear Superintendent Gall. I'll turn it over to you. Dr. X, please.
Members of the board, Superintendent Gall. Tonight, we introduce formally a Policy BDF Advisory Committees. This policy keeps in line with the previous action items that you just voted on and removes the regulatory language and the specific committee language from the overall policy and aligns it to general committee guidelines for the three types of committees that you can charge.
Okay. I think Ms. Clausen is pulling up the version that has been uploaded on board docs. Okay. That's the clean version of Policy BDF after some of the previous language has been removed. Okay. Board, any comments, feedback on this policy as presented at this time? Director Carey?
Yeah, all board directors, you saw an email from me earlier this week. In light of some of the conversations that we've been having at the work session, I have some very small proposed changes to Policy BDF that I would like for you to consider. So, there are two sentences that I added, highlighted here in red. The first sentence up top is stuff that is already true. The role of advisory committees is already well-defined in state statute. The fact that they are not decision-making bodies and the legal responsibility for decision resting at the board level is already the case. I just thought, in light of our conversations, it was useful to emphasize it. And then the second sentence under number two that I would like to, I would like for us to consider adding is that the board formally takes ownership of the relationship between district staff and our advisory committees. And again, my claim would be this is something that is really already the case. Advisory committees report to us. Staff, by way of the superintendent, reports to us. And so, we do, in reality, have authority over both of those groups and we have the responsibility to make sure that they are interfacing in a productive manner. And again, so my contention would be this is already the case. I just thought it would be helpful to emphasize it in policy.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Director Carey. And also appreciate that you sent that email to the board in time so that the board had time to review this and it's not being presented as a surprise at the board meeting. Comments or thoughts on what Director Carey has proposed? And I have Director Bankus first.
I think after a lot of conversation at the work session, Mr. Carey lays out the pathway, the direction that the board had talked about during the work session. So, I fully support your amendments.
Okay. Thank you. Director Ott?
Thank you. I have no objections to the additional language. I have greater concerns about the policy overall because this does remove all references to all of our standing committees. I would like to follow up with a question and it can be after we continue this part of the conversation. But I do have a question about where the standing committee charges and information should be for us and for community reference. Thanks.
Answer that question. Director Nelson?
Well, I also have a separate thing. I agree with these edits to the policy and then I have an additional thing as well.
Okay. So, do you want to go with Director Ott's question first about, and my understanding is, correct me if I'm wrong, that there are other policies specifically to address the charge, the language for some of the other committees, Director? Superintendent Gall?
Not sure the district is in a position to answer this. This is a policy question, so I think it's the will of the board. I mean, you can create a policy to say where your committees are or your policies individually say where your committees are. So, I think what Dr. X has been asked to do is make recommendations of how do we start to get our policies more in line with policies represent individual functions, not policies cover other policies? So, if we add a typing committee, do we now have to then go change the overarching policy that addresses where committees are? Right now, most of that information, I think, is available in the policy series that covers the function of what that committee would stand for. So, I'm not sure. I will stay mute on the subject and wait for direction from the board.
And my understanding is?
And since you look at the CASB policies that are up there, the recommended CASB policies, some of these other policies, like the nutritional, what was that policy?
The Nutrition Council BD. Currently, we have a policy, there's BDFH, which is a policy about a committee that is actually a council.
Okay. So, but that is addressed to the separate policy?
That's correct. The recommendation is when you, if it's the will of the board, to create a policy about a specific committee, that a separate policy for each committee would be created.
And that's what CASB has recommended?
Correct.
Okay. Great. You had something to add? Okay. I'll come to you first, Director Ott. Does that answer your question?
I was gonna add, I just was gonna add to it. So, as we're trying to reduce policy, instead of having one policy, BDF, which addresses several committees, we are, it sounds like it is being suggested that we have multiple committee policies. In the end, we, sorry. In the end, we change a policy if a committee, let's pick on the Millevy Override Oversight Committee with our unreasonable 23-member requirement. So, in, instead of going to BDF and making a change to one policy, we'll go to a MLO-specific committee policy and change one policy. Is that correct?
MLO policy. There's no recommendation to have an MLO policy.
Right. It just sounded like there might be a recommendation to have a policy per committee. That's what I understood you to say.
Well, some committees, CASB recommends some of them to, like DAC is Policy AE, that's referenced. I think some have. But I don't think there is a Millevy Override Oversight Committee policy.
The current structure of the CASB, sorry, President Malpackham, the current structure of the CASB is that in AE, which is accreditation, there is mention of the DAC, which is a required committee by state law. Other committees or other councils, CASB makes a recommendation, but there is no legal, there's no legal grounds for you to have to have a policy. So, you can have committee policies if it's the will of the board or you can have committees charged and have documentation of those charges and that membership in board minutes.
Thank you.
Okay. Director Nelson, did you have any comment or question?
Yeah. So, did we address the concern of where the guidance is gonna live for the committees? I'll just throw out an option is that we have Policy AE, Accountability Commitment to Accomplishment. We have then a regulation that is the bylaws for the DAC. Maybe we then need to, for like the MLO committee, we have AE-R-2 that is the MLO committee. Here's the guidelines. We expect this minimum number of people being in this committee. But I'm not, I'm just trying to come up with a solution, some ideas that could be possible because I agree, it doesn't make sense for that information to necessarily live in a policy. It more is just like the operations of how these committees are working. So, maybe a regulation makes more sense. But my, my comment is regarding an email that we received about, I think we, as a board, need to provide clarity to the committees and the subcommittees as they're setting their agendas. We established that the president and vice president would be a part of that conversation with the superintendent as the DAC, the overarching DAC, sets their agendas. And then I, as the treasurer, can be a part of the conversation with the CRO and the Budget Subcommittee Chairs. That's not previously how I've been operating. It's been more that those Subcommittee Chairs just work directly with the Chief Resource Officer and like the Accreditation Subcommittee works directly with Dr. Colicky to set their agendas. I think, I just, I just want to put it out there that the board did not really bring clarity to how we want the subcommittees to operate. As the treasurer, I am fine with it continuing to be the Subcommittee Chairs coordinating with the Chief Resource Officer. And then if they need to pull me in as needed, I'm happy to help participate. But I just know we got an email that I think we need to help bring some clarity and set expectations.
Okay. I know that we discussed this to some extent, at least at the work session. And board clarity on the subject matter might be beneficial for all parties involved, including administration. And my understanding at this point in time, for the sake of consistency, that it's the board president and the vice president that is going to be meeting with Ms. Clausen, the DAC chair. And what I shared with them also, that Subcommittee Chairs are welcome to join in that meeting as well, to propose the agenda to the board president and the vice president. We will carry that information to Superintendent Gall. And we also have an understanding as to what is coming in front of the board over the next several agenda meetings. And we can collaboratively work together in providing that feedback and information to them. And through Superintendent Gall, that information will also go to the CRO, which is Dr. Brandon Comfort. And then Dr. Comfort can work with Treasurer Nelson, in this case, with the Budget Subcommittee Agenda Items. Otherwise, it becomes too many voices. I don't know, the, we have committee charges coming to, committee agenda items coming to the president and the vice president's Subcommittee. I don't know whether they reach out directly. The Accreditation reaches out directly to Dr. Colicky. That's my proposal at this time. Dr. Bankus?
That was my understanding after the work session is that committee work that are, under the direction of the board, would submit their agenda items or suggest their agenda items to our president and vice president before they go into their agenda-setting appointments with the superintendent so that we can dovetail the requests coming from committees in a logical manner that doesn't overload our staff. That's what I thought we'd said at the work session.
Thank you. I mean, that's the clarity that Director Nelson requested. Director Ott?
Thank you. I'm just gonna revisit my earlier comments that I believe this is really micromanaging the committees, which are supposed to hold the district and us accountability, accountable. And so, I do have difficulties with this, especially if it's the entire agenda that you would be approving. And I think that you might wanna, if that's how it's gonna be, then I suggest that our officers be very generous in what the DAC is considering in terms of their agendas. I would prefer that it only came down to staff updates, updates that they have on their agenda where they're asking for staff time. That was part of the whole concern originally. And beyond that, it's really, it can get very political possibly. If we, as a board, don't like their direction, we just get to say no to the group that is trying to hold to the state requirements. And I do have some issues with that as far as transparency. Thank you.
Hear your concern and we will make sure that we navigate that as best as we can at this point in time. In having that conversation with Ms. Clausen, all we requested is that provide the agenda at this point in time. And what I also requested is that when she is providing the agenda, align it with a specific charge that the board has already approved so that there is clarity and it aligns with what the board has already approved. And with that being the case, I can take that feedback and make sure that those presentations happen in a timely manner. If clarity is required as to whether an item aligns with a specific board charge or not, we'll certainly bring it back to the entire board so the board can take a look at that. So, it's not just the two of us making that decision at that point. Okay. And we will provide, sorry, we will certainly, that's the hope and the intent, what I shared with all of them is this is a new work in progress and there are going to be hiccups along the way. From my role in this capacity, I want to facilitate that conversations to be as smooth as possible and make sure that their requests are being communicated to the district admin staff. And- And also, the district staff's time is being honored and valued, that we don't have multiple presentations happening at different subcommittees and committees. Director Bankas.
I think your point is well-taken. I also think that the way this board has operated since I've been on it is that each board member is engaged with the volunteers who sit on the various committees and there's communication going back and forth so that there's really an opportunity for more voices to be heard as the agenda-setting meetings will take, will take place with our input as we get input from others. I think it's a multi-conversational mode that we participate in because we are involved with our community and so it's not a silo. I think that we have relationships with enough of our volunteers that I don't see the, I don't see that at this point with this board and the way in which we've all operated, that the politically motivated or the censorship or any of those other confining kinds of concerns are a concern. What I see the intent of all of this is, is that we are not overloading our staff by making individual requests. And that has been a concern since I've been on the board. So to honor that and to keep the lines of communication, not only between our board members, but also through our volunteers, that gives us a rich conversation from which we can glean the direction in which our agendas should be set.
Thank you. Any other feedback or comment on this? And Ms. Olson, can you pull the red line version that is out there? No, not this one. Yeah, what Director Carey, yeah, proposed, right there. By show of thumbs, is the board comfortable with this one that has been proposed out there? Okay, so this is the one that will come in November as action item, what is proposed out there. As far as the rest of the conversation goes, where other specific committees should be addressed, if it should be addressed in different set of policies, that's a conversation for a different time. When we address policy AE at that point in time, let the board address that when we go to that A series policy. Thank you. Moving, moving to the next non-action item, Board of Education priorities. And Ms. Amy from AdPro, she is going to be joining us. The board reviewed this information and new graphic during the September 25th work session, so you can share some of the specifics, what is going to change before this comes as an action item in November?
So you guys are gonna get a different version, slightly bit different than what's up there, that includes a border around it so you can see sort of where the white space is and where the edges are. So this statement goes all the way to, is at the bottom and that blue bleeds into the bottom as well as the sides of Colorado Springs bleeds into, all the way across into the white space. The things that will change are those photos. We also tweaked the photos down a little bit and over, but they will change. We are still working to get the exact right photos and I will be going to some of the community events, the Fall Festival and West 100th anniversary to get some engaged community and family pictures as well. And, and so this is kind of, those are the big things that will, that will change are those, are those photos in particular.
Thank you.
So again, like we talked about, the, the main priority is in larger font, but it's in a circle, show that the work never ends, so.
Okay, so what I understood is that picture that is under engaged communities and families will be a different picture?
Yes, and having looked at it. With our team, we will probably be changing the grad photo out to one where her arms, not in her, in her face, quite like that, but one if, that shows that level of excitement. That's why I chose it, because I knew we wanted that level of enthusiasm and excitement.
Director Bankas.
Your graphic, and I hold it out, I think it's very attractive. And what stands out is Board of Education priorities, what stands out is improved student outcomes. And if you bring it in closer, then you read the bottom, I think it's really well-balanced. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And we will be, I'll be measuring this after the next board meeting, so, so it fits there and there's plenty of white space for signing. So, thank you, guys.
Hang on a minute, that is, Director Jorgensen had a comment as well.
Yes, I know that we're changing some of these pictures.
I do appreciate in this model, the diversity of all the different races included here. So if you're adjusting some, try to keep that good diversity there, so.
And, and across the schools as well as ages of students. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. I know that a lot of time and effort went into this. It looks like we are almost at that finish line. By next board meeting, we should have a banner that will hang on the wall and the board can formally adopt this as the Board of Education priorities. Thank you. Yeah, I mean, this is moving to action. That's my understanding, action, yeah, moving to action. Future agenda items, tasks, request for, from board members. Director Ott.
I noted the Green Summit earlier, the Student Symposium. For me, it served as a reminder that District 11 had done an energy audit earlier in the year, or it seems like ages and ages ago that we agreed to do that. And when I last asked for an update, I think it was still in process. So personally, I'm hoping that'll show us the way, like these students, we're learning about, about how the district can be more energy efficient and save money through those efficiencies. So I wanted to be sure and follow up and ask for an update on the status of the audit and what the future might hold for any resulting projects.
Yes, I can briefly update the board that the audit is complete. We have delayed bringing that to the board as to not to confuse the public on where the COP dollars are going because we will have to create a funding mechanism for how it is that we pay. That's part of that energy savings contract. And so we've cleared the main hurdles in our COP conversation. So I think we're prepared to bring that as an update. We can probably do that in November or so to the board, to be able to bring that to you on what the next step for that energy audit would be.
Okay, that would be great, thank you. The other question I had for all of us, the, is the board's self-evaluation, in theory, we're supposed to do that by the end of August. According to our board manual, it calls for that annually and it's a reflection of our effectiveness, how we work together if we're sticking to our norms, and it's a good account, self-accountability for leadership. And I was curious if we'd all like to go ahead and do one of those, especially since we have two new board members. And I know sometimes we have issues with the tool that we have used in the past, but just, that shouldn't stop us from a self-evaluation and learning how we can improve ourselves as a group. So I'd be curious about that.
Thank you, Director Ott. I'm just trying to recall when I had this conversation with Director Hayfley at some point in time during the summer or previous to summer, we did talk about, I did mention to her about the board's self-evaluation. And then I got busy with the, working on the superintendent's contract and the, finishing up the superintendent's evaluation and it kind of fell through the cracks. And so we did not complete that self-evaluation in a timely manner in August. We do have that rubric and we can follow the same rubric as we have done in the past. And it's a little bit later than usual, but it's something if the board is interested in doing at this point in time, we can do that self-evaluation and then get that feedback. Usually, Dr. Colicky helps put together that data and provide summary from what I previously understood at that point in time, so after the board completes it. I can ask for the board for thumbs up, but before I do that, Director Ott.
I did not mean to lay blame at all. I mean, we are all busy and it always seems we're just especially busy in the fall. And really, for, since we do have new board members, just, this gives them a little bit closer to that full year, so I think we're all good there.
No, I didn't take it that you were laying blame. I was just saying that it was discussed by Vice President Hayfley and me, it just fell through the cracks after that.
All right, thank you.
But are you comfortable putting the self-evaluation together? Show of thumbs, okay. Director Hayfley, I'm going to lean on you, but that, is that something that you can, I can provide you the rubric that we have used in the past and you can work with Dr. Colicky if necessary in putting together the survey documents, if that is okay with you, Superintendent Gall?
Yes.
Okay, great. You're good, Director Hayfley, good. Any other request? Seeing none, calendar review Wednesday, October 9th, we have a work session. The following Wednesday, October 16th, we have a possible work session, even though schools are on a fall break. And then Wednesday, October 23rd, could be another work session at that point in time. Seeing no further, oh, okay. Director Nelson?
I'm out of town the week of fall break and not able to call in.
Me as well.
Okay.
And so is Director Jorgensen.
Taking advantage of a fall break.
Yeah, we're gonna take a break with our families.
Yeah, we'll take that into consideration. I think Superintendent Gall, remind me, I think you said you are going to be out of town on October 23rd?
That's not confirmed.
Okay, that's not confirmed?
I am, I can have one of the members.
Okay, great. Okay, we will take that into consideration when we are planning that agenda meeting with Superintendent Gall. Director Ott.
Thank you. Are we considering an October 30th meeting as well? I know it's not on, weeks, weeks away, but.
At this time, I don't have an answer for you. Usually, we look at three weeks in advance. I don't know what's on the board agenda at that point in time. If it's close to Halloween at that time, we will see if a special meeting is needed to discuss any agenda items. I don't have an answer for you. Okay, yeah, thank you. But I can get back to you after tomorrow's agenda-setting meeting with the superintendent. Thank you. Seeing no further business, if there are no objections, this meeting will adjourn at 8:42 PM.